Well, kidding aside, sorry. We're here tonight, this is Tuesday, January 3rd. Happy New Year to everybody. And we'll get going. The first is an item on Chapel Crossing. The East Village 480 Bedford Road. This is a presentation by Toll Brothers with regarding the change in the approved retaining wall block material for two retaining walls. The ones facing Cabinet Lane. So, anyway. Sabrina, are you doing the, sort of like taking the notes, sort of?
I am, I am this evening, so please state your name and information for the record. Thank you.
That goes up, or we can hold it too. Is it on?
I don't know, there must be a button there somewhere. Maybe you get some help.
Yeah, but Sabrina, I hope you're gonna be able to, you know, work your way back to your former, you know, position. You're doing a great job so far.
Everyone's lost, but she's not there. She's the tech advisor on that.
Well, yeah, if the button on the microphone is not working, then the person in the back will need to come out and try and turn it on.
Just did.
Yeah, just did.
Great.
Thank you.
I have my Zoom is on speaker, so when whoever's talking, I see, so I didn't see that happen, sorry.
Hi Sabrina, it's great.
Does it go up any further? I mean, end up with a bad back.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Now you get to have them drop the mic for me.
My name is Greg Otis from Toll Brothers. I'm here tonight representing Toll Brothers and the Chapel Crossing project. I hope everyone had a happy holiday season, looking forward to a great year. I'm here tonight requesting that the board accept an alternative retaining wall block material for the project. The project approved a retaining wall block material known as Ready Rock. The Ready Rock material is also the wall material that is along Route 117 as you approach the development. Due to issues with our manufacturer, they informed us that they're delayed by about three to four months with production. I'm here tonight requesting that the board consider accepting a block wall that's known as the Recon Weathered Edge. Toll Brothers believes that this wall appearance is actually a little more aesthetically pleasing, a little more linear. The blocks themselves are very similar to the Ready Rock blocks. They do differ dimensionally by approximately three to six inches in depth and about two inches in height. We are prepared to submit new retaining wall calculations and drawings to the town engineer for his review and approval on the engineering side of things. And we are not proposing any changes to the wall color itself. If you recall during the approval process, the wall colors are custom stained after the wall is installed. So really, the only change that we're proposing is the actual block appearance itself. We do have...
And there won't be any changes in slopes or, right, the cut and fill? I mean, this is just almost a field change, except that maybe that's about it.
That is correct. No changes to the top of wall, the roadway slopes where the wall face is positioned within the site plans. And really, the only change is kind of behind the wall with respect to either the geo, the structural geo grid, associated stone, et cetera.
On this, did we agree that we would have, question, that the wall would be stepped in so that we've had plants and they be at a certain height? I can't recall, I thought we did that with the bigger expanse of the wall. Maybe not.
Not that I recall.
So whatever we proved, we did.
Yeah, the wall is tapered in of itself, so it's not a vertical, you know, straight vertical face. It does have a couple inch, you know, setback from the lower block itself. And then also regarding the top block, the top block would also allow for topsoil to be placed on top of it. So the grass would be able to germinate to approximately six inches away from the face of the block wall. So very similar condition to the Ready Rock wall. We do have a mock-up wall prepared in the field. The wall has not been stained yet, but if acceptable to the town and the board, we would like to move forward with the construction once all the engineering reviews have been completed. Move forward with the construction and then proceed with the staining of the mock-up wall closer to the springtime for the board's review and approval prior to proceeding with the actual staining of the wall itself.
So this is something that I hadn't understood from the previous submission. That I had, I guess I had, was that to be stained also?
Yes, it was.
Inside, onsite?
The Ready Rock wall was proposed to be stained.
I didn't understand that. So tell me, I thought it was integral to the, color's integral to the concrete.
That is a process that was about, performed about, they stopped doing that about two years ago.
Why?
Because different regions of the country were offering different color variations for the walls.
Okay, got it. So now I'm concerned about the staining and how long, you know, that's gonna last. If this wall is, I mean, we've got walls around here that are, you know, 150 years old, 200 years old. Are the, what's the longevity of the staining? This is a new procedure, a new process?
This is not a new procedure or process. We would hire a, you know, independent contractor to perform that staining, and they've guaranteed that it's a process of about 10 to 15 years.
Well, see, that concerns me now. I mean, it does concern me. So they're guaranteeing that for 10 to 15 years, we expect this wall to be here for 100 years. So what does the town do about that?
Well, I believe that what we can do is have the HOA responsible for maintaining all of the other infrastructure, the private infrastructure, including, you know, maintaining the color, similar to the painting of the homes.
How does one obligate the HOA to do that? I mean, that's just, they make up their own rules?
We can, actually, we have an offering plan that's reviewed and approved by the state attorney general. And that item could be added if it's not there already. We could ensure that that's in there.
But who polices that?
Well, the...
It's self-policing, right, the HOA?
Correct.
So if they decide, and they have their own board, if they decide not to do it, who's gonna say, come, you know, come tell them that they gotta fix it?
I understand the concern. I would, you know, relate that to a very similar situation as, you know, house paint. You know, to a point where they're obligated to perform it.
But we're talking about the wall.
Correct.
House paint's different. That's somebody, no, I'm sorry, I understand it might be the same within the context of the HOA agreement, might fall in the same category. But from the point of view of the HOA itself, right, and a homeowner, there, I think it's a different situation with respect to somebody keeping that, because there is a, obviously, there's some self-interest in a homeowner, especially in a neighborhood like this, to paint their home. I don't think that's a threat. An infrastructure wall which faces another neighborhood, which people in this neighborhood are probably never gonna see unless they're walking through that part of the park. There's no self-interest to honor the agreement of the HOA to go ahead and maintain the wall. So you're saying that this particular manufacturer, for their purposes, their own convenience in manufacturing, have decided not to do integral color in the concrete?
That is correct.
Does any other manufacturer of these, of these products?
No, that is being phased out of the industry because of all the color variations.
It's being phased out, but are there any others that still do it that you know of?
I believe, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, that Bob might also have some, you know, experience with this. I believe in really where the color is integrated wholly into the block pertains to small block walls.
Yes, the, yes, thank you, Greg. Yeah, they make, we're using right now, and again, it's called a segmental block retaining wall system, VersaLock, Unilock. They're smaller rocks in sizes, but to Tom's point, they are integrally painted into the stone, and it is everlasting based on the manufacturer's claims. Now, I mean, I guess what Tom is getting at, if the board would want, I guess, maybe see that type of wall, it's embedded in with the manufacturing process, the same way they do the permeable pavers, Tom. So, you know, if that's something that maybe the board doesn't like, they would do it. I've seen walls of that size with VersaLock 15, 20, 25, 30 feet tall. It's such that this block is a little bit smaller.
Can I add something from an enforcement perspective? So we talked about adding a requirement to the HOA documents that the HOA is required pursuant to its own rules, right, to maintain a certain color. But you can also add that requirement as a condition of your resolution if you're inclined to approve this change, that the color shall be maintained in the approved, you know, condition by the HOA, and then that's enforceable by the town.
Yeah, so thank you for that. My concern about, about that pathway, right, is that the town has a lot of things it has to worry about. And I just, I don't know who would go to the town and say, look, this thing needs to be, you know, needs to be repainted, essentially restained. And I, I mean, I don't know whether the town would necessarily have an interest in policing that. It would ever rise to their attention, if you know what I mean. Unless, I'm sorry, just finish my thought. Unless, you know, perhaps the people who actually look at this wall, which are the people on Cabinet Lane, decided it was a problem and then would use the town in order to fix it.
Well, we've had, we've had maintenance agreements before similar to this, where we have, I think, inspections on a regular basis that are embedded in our agreements. So we could do something every five years, has to be inspected every 10 years, whatever it might be. So that might give us the legs, that would be the catch for the town to go out there and send someone just to check it. Because I think we've done that before on stormwater, we've done it on other infrastructure that we've, that HOAs have done. I don't know how well they're enforced, but I know that in theory, that, I think we could do it that way.
That's a good point, Bob. You can do it the same way, just have them get an engineer, do an inspection report every five, 10 years, whatever the planning board wants, based on the manufacturer's recommendations. They can submit a report to the town engineer, and then if it's satisfactorily still in good looks, it's fine. If not, they have to stain it, if not, they have to come back to the planning board. So there's something you can do from a mechanism, Bob. You know, I'll let, defer this to Jennifer, but I think there's a way to do it.
Right.
Yeah, and I think the key here is trying to keep it as consistent as possible as it ages. I mean, there'll be some sort of tina on it for, of course, but, and we vegetative growth on it probably, but that would be, I think, the point.
Yes, yes.
And I think that could be a reasonable way to, to work our way through this.
We support that.
By the way, the stones on 117, were they the old stones with the embedded color?
Yep. Bob, I know, I'm not positive the year that wall was constructed on 117.
117, the ones that Chapel Crossing put up at the intersection of Roy Brook Road?
Yes.
I believe that's embedded, that's sort of like a unit, Unilock, that's sort of like a VersaLock, where the color's manufactured into the stone during the manufacturing process?
Right. So this product, is this what you guys used down here in Washington?
No, we actually used a very similar product to the 117. Almost, I believe it's almost identical on 117 there.
Okay. So are we satisfied that we think that we can draft some sort of mechanism to afford the level of protection that we would want, to make sure that there's some teeth in the ability of the town to make sure that we have consistency in the surface and appearance and color? I mean, I think, I think somehow we can draft something that will work.
Sure.
Which wouldn't be, you know, overly onerous, I mean, to the HOA, I mean, you know, we don't have to do it every year, but whatever is reasonable, five years, seven years, 10 years, whatever.
Is this the product you propose to use on the Loop Road when you come to that?
No, no, the Loop Road has no changes proposed.
Is that an embedded color stone?
No, that's an actual veneer stone.
Oh, that's right, that's real stone, that's right, that's stone stone.
Correct. No changes proposed.
Right, thank you.
As I think you're using on the buildings themselves.
That is correct.
That's real stone, yeah.
I think that's gonna look pretty good.
We agree, thank you. Thank you.
So anyone, any questions, any further questions, thoughts? So...
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure, maybe I can't hear, I can't hear all the talking that well, but is there gonna be a report, or do we have a report now in hand that, you know, demonstrates, you know, that this wall is gonna be as sturdy as the study that was done originally for the other materials?
Not yet. If acceptable to the board as a proposed substitution, I will proceed to prepare the structural engineering calculations for submission to Mr. Seoli for his review and approval. It's pretty standard calculations that are provided. So if the board is agreeable with this substitution, I would proceed with the engineering immediately and begin the process with Mr. Seoli.
Okay. And Jennifer, what will be the process when we get to the last rung here? Will this just be an amendment to what we've done before, to the early resolutions?
Yeah, because I think your prior resolution specifically referenced either this wall or the plans that show this wall. So it would be a resolution approving this change. If you're inclined to approve the change, I would suggest that you could do that by motion tonight. Approve the change, and then that, then you could direct preparation of a resolution memorializing your action tonight. That would be prepared by staff, and it could be subject to the review of the chairman, rather than having a full resolution come back to the board at your next meeting, just to, for efficiency purposes.
Well, I think we still wanna see Bob's approval of the engineering as well. So perhaps we can, we can, you know, move forward and have a resolution drafted, but with the understanding that we're expecting to receive, you know, the engineering documents.
That would certainly be, I would expect that to be a condition, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if, I think that's a reasonable action. Folks, you think that's okay? Dick, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. So is there a motion then to direct staff to draw up a resolution memorializing our discussion this evening, approving the change, and then with the appropriate conditions, including the enforcement with the HOA? So, motion, okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good, 5-0, so we'll wait for the engineering information, of course, but I don't know if we'll have it ready for the next meeting, but we'll certainly have a pretty short lit area. And then it might take a little bit of time coming up with the drafting for the HOA information. But we'll get this going for you.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board.
Great. Yep, very good.
Have a good night.
Yep, good night. Okay, we have another item, new item on the agenda, excuse me. And this was, you know, we received the packet, so I just wanna make sure we had it. So the town board has issued a, circulated a letter of intent to be the lead agency in connection with reconsideration of the adaptive reuse of the guesthouse located 480 Bedford Road, you know, the Chapel Crossing application. So the current approval is, and the planning board weighed in on this with the town board, at least in one joint meeting on this specific issue. It was a condition that the applicant would need to adapt and reuse the existing building. It was deemed to be of historic import. And the applicant agreed that they would work this into the new clubhouse. So it would be, they would retain it, and it would become the new clubhouse for the development. I don't know exactly what's going on, maybe Bob can fill us in, but apparently, you know, the applicant has come back and petitioned the town board for reconsideration of that condition. And as I understand it, to petition the demolition of the building and reconstruction as a replica, I guess. I don't know to what degree, what replica, and then to, of course, you know, use it as part of the, that little recreation area.
Right.
So Bob, if, maybe you can fill us in, or Sabrina, if you can fill us in with more accurate information that I supplied. And then the issue here is just, I don't know if there's anyone who objects, but it seems to me this has been the town board's issue from the get-go. We weighed in on it along with ARP, but it's always been their, their issue, right? I can't see jeopardizing our pay by objecting to their letter here. But I'd love to hear if there's any kind of thoughts or objections or whatever.
Yeah, according to, according to, sorry Sabrina, you mind if I go on this?
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, according to, I believe what they wanna do, I had some conversations with, I believe, the attorney. They wanna downsize it, and, you know, as long as they stay within the clearing and grading, they're good to go really, because they're not disturbing anything other than that. So they should be good with that, that's what they wanna do, really, come in just for, with the new building permit, and just downsize the, I guess, believe, not the size of the house. They still have to follow the stormwater, but as far as I can tell, if there's any encroachment into the clearing and grading, which they said they would not be, they would have to go back to the planning board in this particular case. So that's what I know about it. Mr. Rabel can probably chime in a little better too as well, I would imagine.
This isn't Mr. Rabel's.
Yes. Good evening, Diana Colovan, I just, I, I just, go ahead, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but I believe it's just limited to the notice of intent at this point. And I, my understanding was that we would be coming back to the planning board after that action is taken by the town board.
Yeah, I think that, that once the town board becomes lead agency, there's a process whereby when they consider the change, they will refer it to you, or there'll be an action where you will have an opportunity to comment on the action. This is just a, an administrative, do you object to their intent to be lead agency?
Right.
And ultimately, Diana's correct, that ultimately, that the site plan application that was approved by your board will have to be amended to eliminate the condition that the guesthouse is to remain. But right first, the town board has to complete its CECRA review, subject to it becoming lead agency. The concept plan has to be amended, and then it would come to your board for amended site plan approval with the request to eliminate the condition that the, the guesthouse remain.
I'm just curious to know why, like, why is, why are they requesting the change?
Well, can we, yeah, does it matter?
I think the applicant can probably address that.
I don't have that time, right? I just don't wanna spend time, if it's not necessary, it's procedural, this.
And actually, frankly, we really don't know what the application is, so it's, we're speculating on speculation.
Speculation.
Yeah, exactly, which is really gets us into problems. So it really is a ministerial type of thing, so we don't have to take any action, we just don't object, that's it, as I understand it.
Yeah, there's 30 days, we've already, we're halfway through that 30-day period. I mean, no action and acting to say, okay, is the same.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, so, so, okay. I don't have any objection to the town board being lead.
Exactly, right.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
No, it's just learning that it will come before us, it's good, so we'll talk about it then.
Exactly.
You can just strike what I said before, I got it confused with another project, so. I thought it was 767 King, so hopefully Sabrina didn't write all that down.
All right, I have a question or two on this, just to make sure that whatever hearing we have is, is, questions have been thought about and answered. For instance, you know, they, it seems like the, somewhat the, the old building is not safe or has construction issues. I'd like to know what they are. You know, it's, it is an old house, but my goodness, it's, it's, it's not made, you know, with one-by-two, two-by-fours. It has very sturdy kind of things. I've not heard of any, you know, infestations from bugs that would, you know, that would destroy the wood. So I'm confused as to why they wanna take the building away. There must have been a cost analysis that they think, you know, would justify doing this. I think information like that should be provided.
Dick, I guess you're right, but I think that that's not what's on the table right now. I think what's on the table is just as, as, as Bob said, is just the town board's declaration of being the lead agency on, as a procedural matter. The content of whether or why the building ought to be renovated or not renovated, or tore down or not torn down is, is a further discussion that I think we'll have. This is just, I think, let's not mistake it, this is just about, this is just about the town board declaring themselves lead agency and us commenting on that.
And I think, I don't think anyone really is, you know, wants to object to that. I think, I think it's perfectly fine, but we will be hearing about this in detail. We'll probably see all kinds of detailed plans and alternatives.
I have the same question as you do, Dick, don't get me wrong, I'm just not sure it's time for them.
Yeah, well, that's okay, I'm just trying to make sure that it's gonna be on the table when it comes, as opposed to us saying, yeah, maybe it is too old or whatever. Maybe if it's too much, why not the, you know, sell the property to someone? Maybe someone could, you know, love to have the house.
Yeah.
If I may.
Tonight either, I agree.
I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we've made multiple submissions to both the town board and the planning board that will address those questions, and it is something that we will be addressing with the town board.
Sure.
I just, just wanted to clarify that, there have been, have been studies submitted.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we take the extension since Mr. Rabel's here, rather than keep him waiting? Why don't we take the number four on the agenda? That's the 767 King Street, Chiselhurst subdivision lot, under 60 extension. It's gonna transfer in the ownership of the property, and the applicant has requested an extension to, I guess, identify all the various challenges, et cetera. So we have the correspondence. Does anyone have any questions from Mr. Rabel, who's here? Do we have any issues at all, Bob, Sabrina, Dennis, regarding this extension?
I have no issue.
Okay.
I have no issue.
Anyone have any questions at all? On it?
No.
Is there a motion then to grant the extension that the applicant's seeking? So, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great, we're all set.
Thank you, Happy New Year.
Do that, thank you. Okay, let's go to our local law referral, this is the NG 0 legislation. This is to amend Chapter 60 of the code of the town of Newcastle to establish a special use permit for mixed-use residential buildings that meet certain green building standards at 50 North Greeley Avenue. Well, I don't think that's really right, just green standards on North Greeley Avenue, not 50. I think that would be inappropriate just to say it's rezoning it just for that one property. So...
Which sort of gets at part of the problem.
Yeah, real fast, real fast.
Here we are.
So I had a question, and Sabrina, Jennifer, just a preliminary question, just from my own understanding. What is the legal difference or the impacts between having, setting up an overlay area, zone, or rezoning? Are there differences in what has to be done for CECRA? Is it still, is there a difference, material difference, one way or the other?
For secret purposes, no. It's, it's rezoning either way, it's just a matter of the zoning mechanism that's used. So here, we're, this is just a text amendment that's being proposed. So the zoning district remains the same, but the zoning code, the text of the zoning code is proposed to be changed to add this new special permit use that would be permitted in these two, in two zoning districts within the town, subject to certain locational requirements. An overlay district would be creating a brand-new zoning... requirements. An overlay district would be creating a brand new zoning district that would then be applied to certain areas of the town. Um, as opposed to, and there's also a floating district, which is different than an overlay. A floating district is a brand new district that's created, but it's not at the time of adoption actually applied to any particular property. I like to literally envision it as like a cloud floating above the town. Um, and then an applicant would have to make an application to the town board for a legislative act to actually take that zoning district and pull it down and apply it to their particular property, assuming that they're, they meet, you know, the eligibility requirements for that floating district. So those are um, a couple of different zoning mechanisms, but they're all, you know, they're all legislative actions, um, by the town board. Um, the secret process for each of them is, you know, there is a secret process for each of them. Um, uh, it would be similar for each instance. Um, here, you know, the secret process involves identifying which properties could be eligible, um, to utilize this new special permit use. And the town board has identified that it's fifty North Greeley and also the property immediately to the north. Um, those are the two properties that could potentially utilize this new special permit use if it's adopted. So the secret analysis would study the impacts of the current project that's proposed, uh, because we know the parameters of that. But it would also study on a conceptual level, the impacts of any project that could be proposed on the parcel to the north, since that's also eligible.
If we were to look at this as an overlay, would that generally be a broader area? Uh, it seemed to me when we were having our discussions last year and the year before, and we started to isolate North Greeley, uh, the word that I always heard people throwing around was an overlay district for North Greeley. And now we've got it segmented into just perhaps just two eligible properties based on this proposal. So I, I, it seems to me, I mean, I understand, uh, and I'm guided on this conversation or these questions by Eldad's observation last time. Are we not making this so detailed and so drilled down that we're going to impose burdens on other property owners? Even though this property owner has a project that will meet these, uh, requirements, and I'm really concerned with that.
Right. So I think there's two concepts there. Um, one concept is that the specificity of the special permit standards that are drafted in this legislation. And I, I tend to agree that I think they could be more general, um, so that they are more applicable, not just to fifty North Greeley, but it's not going to overly burden the property to the north as well. And it's, it's going to allow for uh, potential redevelopment there, um, as well. The second concept with respect to the overlay, an overlay district would be creating a new district that would essentially sit on top of or overlay, uh, the current zoning district and could impose, um, additional burdens or could allow for additional opportunities, depending upon which, how you look at it. I think for that, if you want to expand the geographic area, you know, obviously you're going to have to have a town board that is receptive to wanting to allow for this type of use in additional areas along North Greeley, other than these two properties that have been identified.
But with the specificity, which, which is, uh, embedded in the, the proposed text right now, you could do an overlay. I, 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 I wonder if you, could you do an overlay with this specificity and have it apply to the whole area? And still only have those two lots eligible under that zoning text to develop.
I guess you could, but then I guess I would ask why.
No, I'm not recommending that. No, I'm not recommending that. I'm trying to understand, you know, the parameters here.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Um, so, uh, if one was to do an overlay as a consequence of, that doesn't make sense, right? If one is to do an overlay, one would do, I would think, a complete new zoning text that granted certain provisions to every property owner or that applied to every property owner, gave, gave opportunities to every property owner. Um, without being so restrictive and applying only to these two, that would be the proper way to do an overlay. And that's a whole different exercise.
Right. So, so, um, you know, there, there are two questions, two, you know, taking, well, two, two, from my perspective, two threshold questions, taking a step back. You guys know I love to take steps back. Um, one, which we haven't even gotten to, which is are we supportive of the proposal, the end result of the development that's being proposed? We haven't obviously begun that discussion and I don't think we're ready to have that discussion yet. Um, two is, what is the appropriate method, the right process to getting there, to, to a proposal? I think we have identified a number of issues with this uh, process that's being proposed, uh, the special permit, uh, process and because it, it just raises so many questions, right? And what, what is the intent uh, of this process? Is the intent of this process to allow fifty North Greeley to develop? Is the intent of this process to allow two properties in North Greeley to develop? Is the intent of this process to avoid a spot zoning change, but only allow fifty North Greeley to develop? Is the intent of this process to open the door for additional development on North Greeley? I mean, and, and there's a million other questions, right? That can be asked. What is the intent of this process and?
Or what should the intent be?
Right. And, and I think that we need to understand, and of course, there's the, the genesis of this specific uh, proposal or specific procedural proposal clearly is, or to me anyways, questionable, right? Like, where did it come from? And why is the language that written the way it is? We don't love it for so many reasons. Um, that it makes it hard to even examine. Ultimately, what we're talking about here is like, do we want this development in this, you know, it's, it's, you know, the question of ultimately, it's a relief on heightened parking, right? Like we talked about last week. And, and that's fine. That, that is, that is a fair question to ask and we need to figure out how do we get there. But first there's the process question. And, and it is one, I think, also for the town board, you know, to, to Jennifer's point, right? I mean, does the town board want to open the door for the potential of additional development along North Greeley? And if so, what is the right way to do that? Um, so it, it's, it's a little bit challenging and I wonder, uh, Bob, um, you know, this is on our agenda today. But what, what is, or, you know, or Sabrina or Jennifer, like, what is our process, right? And what's being asked of us?
Exactly. So Sabrina, I think if you could, I think you, the last time we met on the subject, you gave us a, a summary of what the process is with respect to the town board and the, uh, proposed zoning, uh, legislation and then subsequent review, uh, site plan review and, and submissions, applications by the applicant. So, um, what is, what's the sequence that the, could you go through that sequence again, that the town board is, is anticipating in our in our, uh, contribution to that?
So I, I can, I can tell you what I know. Um, and you know, and Jen can contribute as well. My understanding is that this legislation is being proposed as a green building, um, special use permit. It's requiring levels of green construction and, um, building implementation, for lack of a better word, where there is, uh, very little to no carbon emission ultimately from the finished product.
Sabrina, I'm sorry. Thank you for the, but I'm not talking about the content.
I know, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. My, my understanding is that the, as, as this legislation has been drafted, the applicant is looking for a joint process where the legislation would be, uh, would go through a process at the same time as the site plan would. That is what staff have been told. We have not seen a complete application from the applicant to indicate that that is what they want to do, but the legislation is written is that that process will occur at the same time. The town board has moved forward and, and, um, set the public or set, you know, referred the legislation to you for review and comment. The applicant felt it necessary to come in and present the project that this legislation is reflective of. Um, it is the intention, I believe, that the town board would like to hold joint review meetings when the application is complete. So your feedback can be given alongside the town board members' feedback and you can all have discussions on this. Um, in my opinion, there's much work in the legislation right now to really create that process. I can tell you that the town board does not want to um, very much wants to work with the planning board on this process. Um, but we are now facing a, a referral of the legislation to give feedback on the legislation. Um, you know, and, and honestly, I think you all have some very good comments on the legislation and we need to put together, um, a, a response memo. By no means do I think that this legislation is in form to be adopted at this time. But we're, we're, we're being forced to, to present it to you as it is right now because of the process that was started. But I don't think that, I think that this is the beginning of the process.
Great. Thank you very much. So, um, Eldad, this is what I, this is, I was sort of going back and trying to figure out, okay, how did this happen?
How did this happen?
What's the strategy here and whose strategy is it? Right? And this is, this is what I came up with and I could be wrong, but it seems to me that what's going on here is that we have a developer with a piece of property and a property owner, it's a team. Wants to develop their property and they have, and what they would like to do is they'd like to maximize the value of the property, which is perfectly okay, obviously. And in order to do that, they would like to essentially pick a couple of things out of, dare I use the word, the form-based code discussion, which is four stories, gives them an extra level of development. And some creative approach to parking, which was never resolved in the form-based code discussion. And use those two things in order to get as much value as they can about the property. Now, how do they go about that? One way to go about that would be to use the existing zoning and go through a Z B A variance review and work with the town in order to figure out how to do the parking. And risk that the Z B A would say four stories is too big an ask in a three-story zone, in a zone where we can't do four stories. So that's probably a dead end. They'd probably have to go to the town board anyway and say, can, can you do something here? So that would be just wasted time. So the next step would be, well, maybe the town could rezone the whole area as an overlay, which we thought the town was going to proceed to do. And the town decided that not yet, or for whatever reason, that didn't happen. And by that process, there could be the zoning in place that they could go ahead and do their development, but the town hasn't moved on it and it's, they don't want to stick around and, and wait for the town to do that. So what's left is for them to write the zoning themselves. And to figure, and to try and use that as the device to be allowed to go ahead and get the four stories and get the parking done. And appealing to the town to say, we would like to, to sort of take the lead here. My objection to that is that, well, there are lots of objections to it with regard to the content of it and the consequences to the, uh, the rest of the property owners of the district. The, uh, other problem I have with it is that it's never a good, I don't think it's ever a good idea to have a private property interest take a lead in writing zoning. There is, it seems to me that, that once you have that third, the, the writing zoning is sort of a two-party agreement between uh, the town board and the town, the public. And if you have a third party interest coming in, all of a sudden you have debates and, and you have interests that I think make it more difficult for the town to do the right thing in representing everybody in town. And I think it's a mistake, just, I, I just think it's a mistake for the, for the developer to be allowed to write this text. I just, I think it's, it's the wrong thing to do. But that's the town board's decision, not ours. But I think it needs to be seen, that our review of it needs to be seen in the light and reviewing the text and being very careful to, to be able to parse where what's being asked is really more in the interest of the applicant than in the interest of the people, uh, in town and the other property owners. I think that's where our review really needs to go.
I do too. I, I, you know, I, I, we talked about this earlier. My perspective on it is, I have the giant problems with just the, the first opening language. It was you know, sophomoric if, 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 if anything, but specifically, again echoing your comments and Eldad's comments. I don't understand the special, from the standpoint of the town in terms of zoning. What's so special about this side of North Greeley versus the other side of North Greeley? And what I don't see in here, and I think, Tom, you, you talked about this last time, is, and this is what happens when you look at an overlay, I believe, is you project. You don't just look at the parking needs of this applicant, for example. You look and you project and say, okay, if we do this, what happens to the parking interests of the folks on the other side? Um, there's something in here, for example, that this district cannot go down to the corner. Okay, why?
Right, why?
Uh, these things are, that are opposed. It's like, so it has to be on this side, but it can't go to the corner, but it can only be this. Why? How do we, how do we respond to the people on the other side? And just presume that they never are going to assemble properties, that they're never going to want to come and develop their property, one way or the other, however, or not. And, and, and some of the standards in here were just, okay, we're going to give you a shadow study. Okay, what, what are the benchmarks? You know, what does that mean? Are we going to take it and we go literally going to say uh, that there cannot be any, uh, any spillover of your shadow? Uh, because of solar energy issues for people across the street, that which first, which by the way, would be my position on it. You know, it, 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 to Tom's point, it's been drawn up in a way, and I understand that this is a very attractive proposal with, I, I thought it was a very uh, interesting, uh, proposal. I think it would be a, if it can work, um, it would, could be a, a great asset to the town, uh, much, but again, there's much work to be done, but I don't think by reducing the equation, we're solving the overall problem for North Greeley. And I think this is a step back by taking this, this and just this, hate to say the word because it's loaded, but a segmented, uh, way.
One question could be, if it's really about this property, then it should really be a conversation about this property through the zoning variances that need to be done. Or we're then talking about a district or more than, anything more than one property, the rules have to be sort of well thought through.
Well, not only well thought through, but I think the other issue is unfortunately for the applicant, it seems to me that the scope of study needs to be broader. Um, and, um, you know, for example, I mean, the, the thing that keeps popping up, of course, is parking.
So I, I just, this is what I'd sort of like to suggest. I, I think that I don't even want to, at this point in the conversation, even consider that there is actually a design site plan on the table. Now, I understand that there is a desire to, um, move these things forward at the same time, but I think there's a, actually, there's a danger in doing that.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I think we need to focus on the appropriateness of the zoning itself and the zoning text itself and what the extent to which it, it uh, creates, um, special advantage to a particular property owner at the expense of the other property owners in the area. I think we ought to be focused on that. To load in site plan and architecture and imagery and gee, we can give you all of this and all of that is completely beside the, but this, to me, completely aside what the essential point is here.
Yep.
And
I think those are distractions to what we should be looking at.
Yeah, I happen to think that there are big problems with the design, by the way. I mean, I think very big problems with the site plan and the architecture. There are things about the construction technology questions. I don't know what position the, the, uh, development department has in, in reviewing what the, what they've been proposing and understanding whether it's, you know, technically feasible or, I just don't know any of that. So I think that we ought to be very, very, again, what's interesting is all of this imagery is almost making it as though it's a, it's a, it's a foregone conclusion. That's what it's going to look like. Once you approve the zoning, that's what you're going to get. So I think we ought to just be focused on the zoning and whether we think it's appropriate or not and, and the ways in which maybe it can be, it can be massaged to the, uh, to the benefit of everybody in the area and, and trying to help the town board in that way.
I also think, um, you know, as much as, you know, I ma- I made it clear last, last time that, that I like the concept. Um, that shouldn't surprise anyone, given my, uh, previous public, uh, statements on development in our, in our, in our downtown, but, um, uh, but liking a concept and liking the proposal in front of us are two very different things. Um, and I, I do think that there needs to be a discussion or this topic would benefit from a discussion between us and, and the town. This topic would benefit from a discussion between us and and the town board. About what they want to do. Do they want zoning here that? Only impacts one site and then we need to think about what does that mean only impacting one site because impacting one site obviously doesn't only impact one site, right? Especially when we're talking about parking because there are externalities associated with changing parking requirements and height requirements, obviously. Or do they want zoning that affects multiple sites? As written, we're told that the zoning affects multiple sites.
Or are they just thinking of the project and they're not really thinking through that of the implications in zoning at all?
Right.
Then we have to tell them why it matters.
So can I just, I just want to mention one thing. Um, obviously, this this was submitted via a petition from a property owner. To amend the zoning, right, which property owners have the right to do, they have a constitutional right to petition government. That's something that we can't take away from them. Um, so with that petition, they submitted the draft text of of the zoning that they're seeking to. Um, to have adopted by the town board. The town board, because it has, you know, vast legislative discretion. Was not even required to consider this. They could have said no right off the bat. Um, and they did, they they did, you know, have a process where there was some vetting done prior to referral. Um, I think the staff in my office wished there might have been a little bit more vetting before it got referred. However. The town board, a majority of the town board agreed to refer the legislation to your board. Understanding that it's affects two properties, understanding that it doesn't um apply, you know, these benefits are not being applied to other areas of the town. I think if your board thinks that the town board should consider expanding the scope of the zoning, perhaps considering an overlay to allow for. You know, these types of uses to also be on the opposite side of North Greeley. Um, or other areas of town, but that's, obviously, that should be part of your memo back to the town board. But the town board did refer it to you in this. Form where they could have held it back or they could have just said no. So I just want to make sure that we. Understand where this is all coming from.
Yeah, I I had thought that 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 would be the case, that that they could say, you know, we're just not going to, we're not going to receive it, right? It's a dead letter. But um, it it seems to me that here's, if the town board is going to go through the legislative process. Of changing zoning, that takes time, right? I mean, there's a process you have to and there there are staff resources that need to be engaged in order to do that. So if the town board is going to go through that process to change zoning. Why not use those resources in that time to fix the zoning for the whole area? Right? For the North Greeley. Why not do an overlay for everybody? And if it turns out that, I mean, that's what it seems to me, that's what their obligation is, is to work for everybody. And if it turns out that this particular property owner ends up with three stories instead of four. Or ends up with a parking constraint that he doesn't think that he has now. Well, you know, I feel sorry for that property owning owner, but I think that that would, that's that would be probably the right outcome. For the benefit of the town because everybody would get an equitable treatment in that process. So why spend the time doing this when they could solve the bigger problem?
So so. I I think um, I think, I think we're saying very similar things. Um, and and maybe the. The right course of action for us is to do two things, a memo that. List all the things we don't like, don't like about what's proposed here. The process, there's the rezoning, the special permit, all that, why we don't like it. And then. Sort of tell them, from my perspective, they kind of have two, they can go in one of two directions. They they can make it more specific or more general. Because right now, it's it's a little bit caught in between the two, where it's written, like you say, seemingly. Um, uh, from the applicant, which. In and of itself is is not inherently bad, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it aligns with the town's. Uh, principles, you know, mission, all that, but but it's written to benefit fifty North Greeley, right? I mean, we can't pretend that it that that it's not, right? Uh, but but it also, it does impact another side. Is that, what is the purpose of that? Um, so it can, it can either go for bigger or it can go smaller. Um, but it needs to figure out what it wants to be because I'm not sure that it that it knows that 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 what it is right now is. Makes sense, a lot of sense. So I I think. We want to put together a memo. That says, these are all the reasons why it doesn't make sense from our perspective and we're happy to have a discussion. Uh, either a larger discussion that says, and and I, I agree with you, we we talked about it a little bit last week. And we've kind of been talking about this on and off for a long time, which is. You know, what do we want? What's what's, what's uh, what do we want for our downtown? What do we want for our town? Um, and and what's the right way to go about getting those things? Um, and so if there's a larger North Greeley discussion. I'm here for it.
Well, I think also our our conversation. I think our conversation should be, again, almost with blinders, looking at the zoning itself. And I believe it will not have any adverse impact on this applicant, uh, because it will be neutral. Now, to the extent that they're going to have to perhaps do some more work and some heavy lifting to get to where they might want to get and maybe they don't get there. That's the way it goes, but um, I I think we should do this without this. Particular application in mind, and I think we should do it. You know, again, I don't know what words are, but, you know, an overlay for the entire district. I I don't understand why we're pulling back from what we were doing a year ago, two years ago, whatever it was for North Greeley. And I don't understand why we would just do this one segment just because we have what appears to be, to many people, I guess. A very exciting and different concept. Uh, that's not the way, I don't think, we should be planning our town. That's a very reactive uh way to be planning and zoning. I mean, if we did that every single time someone came in, we'll have an absolute mess here. So why not come up with something that is generic if it, you know, I'm confident, by the way, that it would work for this application as they wish to apply for it. If it works, I don't know. I mean, you know, that that's what we'll have to find out.
What's the um?
My main question here is. Are they even? It it seems like we're not even clear whether we're commenting on the zone. I know the applicant suggested this change. But what is it that we are being asked to do by the town board?
To comment on the legislation.
So then they, then what they're saying is they, they think it's a. It's on the, on the table to be considered. So what we should be saying is, you can either consider the proposal, my. Why should we even be looking at the zoning text is my question.
Because the town board has referred it to you. The town board has accepted the zoning petition. And is interested in pursuing the legislation. And took action to refer it to your board as they're required to do for you to give comments. Um, and they've, I think, scheduled a public hearing, right, Sabrina? Is that first? Um, for one of their meetings in January on the legislation.
Just as far as timing and process, um, what was the timing in the process and is there any? Are there any legal ramifications associated with? Um, the uh moratorium that was in place, that are we under any obligation to act in any, with any?
No, there's no moratorium in place.
No, I know that there isn't now, but there was.
There was, yep, but it's not in place now.
Is there any legal obligation for us to act in any certain period of time?
I think we've been asked to. January fifteenth.
The the referral, the response is by January thirteenth.
Thirteen, okay, excuse me.
Yeah, so so that, so they're looking for your response by that date. Um, and I want to say that the public hearing was scheduled for the twentieth.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, the board, the the planning board has asked the town board for an extension if you feel you need more. Time than until January thirteenth to consider that your comments and prepare a memo. Um, you could request additional time for your referral comments back to the town.
Good, that sounds to me like we need more time because we are talking about three different ways to handle this. You know, so.
Well, I think our memo, our memo could. Could say that and and I I think we're at the point where really we we should be starting to draft that memo. I'm not so sure. When do we meet again? Twentieth, so we may want to ask for an extension just so that we can all see the memo that we draft up with staff. And and comment on it. Uh, but I think we understand that the, I think, the the gist of our conversation is. We're not terribly enthused with looking at this uh zoning for this narrow. Uh, an application. And that we would be uh more comfortable looking at um something that looks at the entire North Greeley. Uh, area, whether you want to call it new zone, zero zone or overlay, who cares? As long as uh uh materially, it's not different in terms of process.
I I guess my language would be a little bit more direct than that, which is that we would. I would recommend that we just reject this and say that. You really ought to be looking at the town board. If they're going to do zoning, they ought to do zoning for everybody, not just for this particular. Uh, property owner and in in particular, it's because in the way in which it's being proposed by the uh. Property owner. It seems to give undue advantage to their particular interests and that's a mistake for the town to go down that road.
Uh, so Sabrina, the 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 um public hearing is scheduled for January twentieth. Is it town board public hearing or 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 is?
Town board public hearing on the legislation.
Got it, and?
Yeah, but don't quote me on that date. Don't quote me on that date. I I have to go and speak with the town clerk to see.
It's not a planning board.
Correct, correct.
But I I do anticipate a working session with them because they did say they wanted to, they said on the site plan. But uh, could we anticipate a working session with them on the on the zoning proposal?
I can't answer that. I think you can request it.
Perhaps that could be the thrust of the memo. We would like to sit down, talk to you about the zoning before we even start entertaining uh anything further, yeah, before we get to a public hearing. Uh, they could, you know. Uh, acquiesce or agree or disagree or reject it. But I uh, I think we have the threads for what I think are are concerns. So I'd I'd rather not put this off where we don't have anything, any words on a piece of paper for us.
At the time, let's do it tonight.
So I mean, we could really enumerate the points that we want to make.
I I agree and and um. The idea of of, you know, just rejecting this out of hand because we want to see something larger. Uh, while I could support that, I do think it's important to tell the town board. You know, or or it's really, it's a question of the town board. What what do they want? Uh, do they want to deal with? The zoning of North Greeley as a whole?
Well, I think the other issue is that.
But why, why, I'm sorry. Would we acquiesce to that? I mean, we we are an independent board. You know, as a consultant, you go out and tell the client, if he doesn't want to hear it, too bad.
Right, yeah, that's fair. But I think the other part of that is to say, this is the way you should be doing it if you want to. Use this kind of thing as the framework. If you're interested in in these environmental characteristics and issues. That's fine, that's good. Uh, but what you can't do is, you know. Do it in such a fashion that it's going to impact the others. And I think that really goes to, what do you want to see on North Greeley? By doing this, by the way, you are now going to constrict what you're going to see later on, whether you realize it or not. I think we have to make them realize that that's what's, that's going to be a consequence.
I think that that um, when you say what you're going to see on North Greeley, what are the options? Um, this particular developer, uh applicant, uh property owner, just applicant, just say applicant. Finds a way through this process to gobble up all the or most of the leftover parking which is available there. As a consequence, the other property owners who are sort of lagging behind in development for various perfectly legitimate reasons. They now are constrained because that has happened.
Yep.
So you end up with one side of the street developed and the other side of the street is not developed. Is that what you want to see?
Exactly.
I don't think that's what you want to see, right? So option number two is, well, you don't give, and the reason they need all that is because they want to go four stories, right? So because if you take the top story off, you're going to lose uh what, one-third of the residential, so you're down to thirty-five units. Which is thirty-five parking spaces. They said they had fifty on site, they give them fifteen. In order to do some retail on the ground floor, retail on the ground floor. Maybe they, we want to get like uh four thousand square feet, that's another ten cars in order to do that. Maybe then we can find ten cars left over, ten spaces left over. And I imagine we could without threatening the other developers and the other, the other property owners. So you have, you have the option of. Deciding whether you want, I think, whether you want to develop uh. Give be, give an equitable situation to everybody and have the chance of developing both sides of the street. Or whether you end up with a one-sided street. And this is the, this is the crux of the thing. We have been arguing for it ever that they should be doing a legitimate parking study. For North Greeley. They should be, well, for the whole downtown.
Well, this app, this applicant promised a.
Yeah, but 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 now it's behind the, okay, that's great, right? And maybe the applicant ought to do it first.
Yep.
And the study shouldn't be, well, how many spaces are out there and how many spaces can we therefore use? This study should be, what is the total parking demand under the existing zoning uh? Zoning rights of properties that are there and how do you then assign those?
I'll bet you a large amount of money, though, that the study will be a static one that does not project.
That's why the town ought to be doing this.
Exactly, exactly, of course, so we all agree on that. So I I.
They ought to do it now.
So can I, can I suggest to kind of refocus you a little bit? Um, you know, I think.
Do we need refocusing?
Focusing except not necessarily to get caught in the details, right, of of how they're looking at the parking study.
No, no, I'm sorry, we're not caught in the details of the parking. We're 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 trying to give a justification for why. This particular zoning, the way it's being done and the options for the town board to move forward rely on a parking study. I think it relies on a parking study.
And and I'm not disagreeing with you, Tom, but you know, I'm trying to call from your discussion points. Here, um, for a memo.
Well, I I think, I think, uh, correctly if I'm if I'm wrong on on hearing folks. I think, I think the issue that we should really lead with um is is one of equity to other property owners, all property owners on North Greeley. I mean, I can't think, that's what zoning is supposed to be all about. So if if we think, if we suspect that this is going to lead to some sort of inequitable uh outcome. For, you know. The the spectators on the other side of of North Greeley, uh, we we ought to uh raise that issue.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're, I mean, basically, they're carved out of this whole process, which is is uh, from my way of thinking, is is really just not, not good.
I'm going to go, I mean, I am going to get in the weeds of parking just for a second. If you look at one of those those sites on North Greeley, they're about six or seven or five or six or seven, which are like twenty-five feet wide.
You mean across the street?
Yeah, yeah, okay, and they're a hundred feet deep, right? So if you, i- if. If you go under, um, if they are going to try and develop their property. You can, you can't get behind unless you are going to have a joint access agreement with the property owner next door. Which is in order to develop their property, which is assuming that you're going to be, if you write that in the zoning, you're. Challenging that person to make a third-party agreement in order to develop his property. You can't do that. You have to give them the opportunity or assume that they're only going to have the twenty-five feet. You can park two cars in twenty-five feet, but you have to park them off the street. And you can only get two cars. And if there is a ratio, residential ratio of uh one per thousand. Um, I guess we're saying right now, um, okay, so that's two living units, right? Two living units of a thousand square feet, that's two thousand square feet. The buildings that are there are two thousand square feet. What's, what's, what's the incentive for somebody to go through the whole process, right? Of redeveloping and go and going through, you know, all these approvals just to get the same amount of square footage that they have now. It's a real problem for them. And the only way I think in which they can, I think. Um, without actually doing third-party agreements or selling out to somebody else in order to get a bigger site. In order to manage the parking. Is to actually be able to capture some of the parking which is available down there right now on public land. Public parking, that's the only way they're going to be able to do it. So off-site, so if you, if if they could, in a site like that, you could, you might even be able to get like. In four stories, you could get eight units, twenty-five feet wide. Let's see, one, two, three, yeah, you get eight units. So they only have room for two. If they're going to do eight, they need six spaces. If there are six, if there are six lots, right? Six times six spaces is another thirty-six spaces. They, that that group of property owners would have the right or the expectation of being able to capture thirty-six spaces. In the downtown area for them to be able to do their property. My fear is that those thirty-six spaces are going to be gone. And and that that they are going to be disadvantaged. And I think that that's the kind of study that needs to be done. And the town board has not asked the development department to do it. The development department, even though they know it's an issue, has to take the initiative to do it. And it seems to me that. And it seems to me that that now's the time, we just have to get this done, I think, before we talk seriously about what happens on North Greeley.
You know, I, you know, I've I've said it before, the parking issue is 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 two, two separate issues for me, it's a, it's a residential question and a commercial question. The residential question is is one that it concerns me less, it's not, it doesn't concern me, concerns me less. If there isn't sufficient residential parking. You know, the. The theory is that the demand for the units will drop. Because people won't have parking spaces and won't want the units to be less desirable. That's not entirely. Problem that I'm concerned with because one, it either means vacant units. And vacant units mean maybe the prices come down, so let them be, you know, more affordable units. My my concern is 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 the, is the commercial parking. And you know, where does a reduction in parking and 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 I'm for the concept of reductions in parking. Just, you know, at what point is the reduction in parking go down so much that? The the commercial is no longer viable.
Threatened, right.
Right? And and then we have. Vacant ground floor uses, which is a concern to me. A concern to, I think, the planning board, it should be a concern to the town, the town board as well.
So that's, I I think that that's interesting because if you have a developer who says, well. That's the case. I still need to develop my ground floor, it's gonna be residential. And so then the question is, is there, how does a town feel about ground floor residential? In on North Greeley, as a sort of an urban, not urban, a town sort of neighborhood street. Which is not necessarily a bad thing, but it means maybe you don't get as much, as much retail as you thought you're gonna get, but how much retail do you need?
Which comes back to the bigger question of what do we wanna do, do we wanna zone all of North Greeley? Asking the questions of what kind of development do we wanna see in our downtown with this as a. You know, sort of a first spot, you know, a pilot of sorts.
Yeah, we're almost saying as this as being a a good example, why we need to think about that entire. District as opposed to just two properties. And here is the reason why. And so either we look at the zoning at least for that district. And maybe it is as wide as being, you know, in two major aspects. The parking as well as the height restriction, maybe this a larger study. I don't think they are interested in going too far south, but what we're saying is what we're applying to two lots of land. And they're saying we need to look at a larger district, when you look at the larger district. What I'm hearing Tom say is you're gonna have to look at an even larger, you're gonna have to look at the downtown, figure out the parking, so we're back to the same sort of discussion, yeah.
To a certain extent, I mean, we made the observation even when the town board a couple of years ago went back, we're just looking north really. We kinda went, okay, so we're just gonna look at that area, not the whole town again, okay, if that's what you wanna do, you know, you're the boss, so we'll do that. But you're, you're, you're very correct, but I think this, this is very interesting, again, Eldad, you reminded me again that. The the residential parking from the the concept that we saw, and I think the request was going from one point three to one. On residential, did strike me as a tremendous ask, that's something that was actually reasonable.
Right.
The whole thing, I really seen, and I asked them specifically, would you be, would you prefer to do away with retail? And if you recall, the developer said, no, no, we want the, we want that, we think it's important. And it might be for from one angle, but from this, from the standpoint of perhaps whatever kind of retail you're gonna have there, especially the diner. Our our requirements are, I mean, I think the the ask was going to be very significant, I mean, perhaps. You know, sixty percent off, seventy five percent off of what we, what we have in our, in our current code. So that's big, and so again, it goes to this fundamental issue, what do we wanna do there? What do we want it to look like? I'm personally up there, I'm not wedded to 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 retail and commercial, and if this thing works, whether it's three floors or four floors. I don't think the fourth floor makes that much of a difference on the retail, excuse me, on the residential. Because they have the, the, I think they have no matter what, the one space per per unit on onsite. So again, it goes to, I think we could throw that out as an alternative.
Okay. Right, but we aren't throwing out alternatives yet or?
Right. I don't know, I don't know, I, it depends on what you wanna do with with a memo, I think.
I think.
I think to just say, no, 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 and this is what you shouldn't do, and that's what we should, you know, I I. I think we should be positive in terms of what we should do, and I think, for example, Tom. Making it very fundamentally clear, fundamentally clear that we want to see a parking study, let's get going on that, we haven't done it. Let's look at this as as an overlay, let's, let's look at the equities that are involved, that are going to be potentially impacted. Let's, let's project, let's not just be reactive. And and that's not to say that this project shouldn't go forward, you know, under those rules and and regulations, but. It seems to me that more secret work needs to be done and, you know, the applicants will have to, you know, will have to bear some of that, if not most.
Right.
To make it work and and go from there.
So my suggestion was to be proactive, right? And but at the same time, I think that we have been asked to look at this memo. And there may be some rejection in that part of our conversation with that.
Yes, I think this is, okay. Which then leads to the positive as as an alternative, this is what we could do or should do. This is what we, we would stress that we should really be thinking about in terms of projecting this area.
So if we, if we could get to them, to the text then?
Sure.
Do you wanna go through it?
Sure.
First of all, and I couldn't find it, Bob, I apologize, but you put together a great little bullet point list of what was in the.
I haven't found it.
In the intent.
Yep.
Yeah, this is great.
Well, that was great enough, I just tried to synthesize the things in there, just so we know what the points were.
The points are great.
Fluff out.
I think, I think that having the points down.
Yeah.
Is great, and I think that there's just a lot of fluff in here.
Yes.
Because there are certain aspects of what are in the purpose and intent section. Which really. Are they special to this project, aren't these things that the town is doing anyway? I mean, yes, we want everything to be, well, you know, I guess, I hate this term, but a livable, walkable town. Yep, yes, we want that to happen, we're doing that anyway. There's nothing special about the special permit, which, you know, delivers that that otherwise wouldn't happen in town, it's already part of our, right? So it seems to me that there, that we need to find a way to just say, what do you really want here? And and why do you want it and why is that good for the town and don't tell us things that we're. That that.
We're already doing.
Already doing.
Yes, to a, to a great extent, I I think they go further in some.
Promote reduction of construction waste. I don't understand why that's in, I mean, okay, that's fine, environmental stuff, but why is that part of a zoning?
Exactly.
Text.
Exactly.
That's part of, that's a, that's a, a construction strategy, construction principles, right? Has nothing to do with something else. So there are a lot of things in here that that seem like they are. They are in here in order to make this tasty, right? With a lot of environmental things which are all good things to do. But it seems to me it's loading up zoning text with with stuff that's just, doesn't need to be in there, the purpose and intent section needs to be. Specifically, what is your purpose, right? And purpose and intent, I think that's, is that a redundancy, I don't know. I'm not a zoning person, but. And to justify this development, and I think that the justification that they may be looking for is. You guys want more development downtown, right? You guys want more residential downtown, you guys want more commercial downtown. Our purpose and intent is to create a zoning which allows us to meet that objective. Right, allows us to meet that objective. That's the purpose and intent. And that, I think, is a legitimate thing for them to say and a legitimate message for the town to receive. The town has to decide whether they want those things so much that the specifics of this are something they wanna embrace. The specifics being, you know, four stories and being.
Right.
And all the others.
But I think that whole first paragraph really summarize it with what, environmental responsive. Not development, I'm sorry. I've lost the word, no, we want density. So you want environmentally responsive density. It seems to be what the thrust of this is all about, now, you could still enumerate some of these things, but. Ultimately, this zone wants to be done in a way that is introduces the potential for density, more dense. Development, but but counterweighted, measured against environmental constraints, environmental procedures. Grain practices, whatever you wanna call, whatever, you know, today's dates, today's. Phrases are, but it seems to me that's really what this is all about. We want to promote the possibility of density. We'll leave that to you developers, but here, here's what we would like you to do it as, you know, and the, the, the important, you know, pictures. And I think some of those are enumerated in the text later on, the first paragraph doesn't help me at all because it's, to me, it's just mush. But if, I I think we've talked about mush enough that perhaps, you know, between Sabrina and Jennifer. And a few of us, we can tighten up that first paragraph and and come up with something that. Is that, is that a proper catchphrase, environmentally responsive developer?
Cut it in half, that should be the goal on that first page.
Yep. Oh, at least, at least, yes.
Well, no, I wanna save five spaces or something so you could put in better things than, there's two or three things there that are okay, but. We could, you could add more, and there's a whole, there's a hope, let me just say a few things that. How do you define NG dash zero? I've never seen that acronym before. And how do you know that it's being, it being provided in the project? You know, so the environmental stuff is like, I agree with you, with Tom, it's like candy. I hope you like the candy. In one place, they say, well, gee, we might not be able to do it, it might be not possible, well, if that's the case, you know, then. Why are we doing the project if it's not gonna do that? It's, you know, you think about seven, six, seven, you know, on the main road, we just talked about it. They volunteered to do, you know, a lot of this stuff. You know, environmentally, and I'm, I wish that project were done, we could see how that would work. So that's, that's kind of like a statement, but I agree that, you know, that parking is a, is a major issue. And and I went down and looked at it, you know, at the sunset, four stories is gonna block. The the light in the afternoon, from noon on probably. You know, on the houses that are across the street. And what are, what, what are the, they're gonna lose out on, on the sunlight, which is kind of is aesthetic thing. But they also may lose out on the ability to harvest sunshine with solar panels or something like that. Is this project going to recompense any losses that the the other owners have?
How could you even measure that over, over what period of time?
You know, in the purpose and intent section, let me just read a. Portion of the sentence here. They wanna increase, you quote, diversity and affordability of housing types. Obtain environmentally and economically sound forms of residential development in accordance with modern planning design criteria. So. Is there anything, it seems to me that the purpose of a special permit. Would be to do something above and beyond or something other than the current zoning allows. And is it true that our current zoning doesn't provide for the diversity and affordability of housing types, I thought we had that in place? Is it true that, I don't understand economically sound forms of residential development? If we didn't do the special permit, would there be? Residential development which would not be economically sound on this property? That's the premise.
Yeah, that's mush.
And what is modern planning design criteria, somebody explain that to me? So this is, it, this is a, this is a sales puff piece.
Totally, so so, but I'm a little worried. I, I, are we critiquing sort of the paragraph by paragraph of the proposal? Or? What I would recommend we do is just give. You know, sort of a bullet point of what we don't, like, what we don't like, kind of bigger picture, we don't like that this is so specific, we don't like that it's a puff piece. We don't like that it, that it doesn't address some of the externalities, we don't like that it, that it, that it, you know, is is small and big at the same, you know, whatever we don't like about it.
No, I I agree, and I just wanted to 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 elucidate why I think this first paragraph is a puff piece. And I think that's all, we have to find probably the right language for it, but that's all we need to say about that.
Yeah, I think it has to be tightened up and 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 condensed into something that really is aligned with zoning issues.
I I guess what Eldad is saying, and I agree with him, is. Why are we trying to edit this text?
Right.
Because we're saying we don't, unless we're saying, we're going to now say, this really needs to be broader text, this is how we would do it. That's fine, if that's what we're saying.
We're not trying to, I I'm not trying to edit the text, I'm trying to go through this point by point, and there are specific points here. And talk about what the asks are and what our reaction to that is, we're not trying, I'm not trying to rewrite this.
So would you, would you, I I thought, I interpreted that you were also looking to edit the first paragraph.
No, I don't wanna edit it, I, well, I just, I think that I would just say, you know, that they want four stories and that, because they think it's good for the town and the, you know, the parking can be sorted out. And that's what I think that the purpose and intent is, right? That's, well, I don't need to say that, I mean, I just, that was my point. I don't think we necessarily need to say that, but I think that we ought to just, I mean, I puff piece, whatever, but it's, it's beside the point. I'm more concerned about what goes after that.
After, of course, yes. So why don't we run through that? I think we've, we've beaten this first paragraph.
Point, point one is that, is that the purpose and intent is entirely too flowery, not specific. You know, everything that we said about it and and needs to be significantly edited down and much more to the point.
Right, much more to the zoning point, not this exogenous stuff that has nothing really to do.
Yes, I think we're, we're all on the same page there.
Site requirements, site requirement, any lot situated on the Westerly side of, the site requirements are such that. I I understand that it's, it's making it specific to this piece of property because that's the whole point of the whole thing.
Yeah, but that's, that's our, that's what our.
That's our main, or probably our main concern.
Yeah, right there, I mean, you know, one A is the first one, why are we just looking at?
Right.
This part, why are we looking at just thirty three thousand square feet, why does it have to be that size, what's the, why?
Why the Westerly?
Or why can't they do this through the current system, which is go for a zoning.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
But I know why, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but that's the point to me.
Yep.
So point two is the specificity of 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 the geographical.
Yeah, why?
Right.
Why would you do that?
You could write why across all of it, but, but yes.
Dwelling units. I don't have any problem with the dwelling unit sizes, I think these are marketplace things that these people are probably.
I don't think we should be getting it to be, and you know, we're, we're gonna tell you when you can have a home office and where that could be, and when it's not at that wrong, I mean, we're getting to.
Well, I also, I actually have the same question on dwelling units of why is, why are we?
Isn't that part of the architecture?
Why are we limiting to two thousand square feet, why are we limiting to five hundred square feet, there's a building code of what a minimum unit size is, right? And if someone wants to combine some of these units later, is that, does that violate the code, you know?
Exactly.
You know, here's another reason why it's in here, maybe it's because they are trying to validate their own design.
A hundred percent, no, this is, this is their design, of course, which makes no sense.
Well, the only sense it makes is the strategic one that the developer mentioned, and that was their, their concern with the schools. And you know, if you have three bedroom units, or have more kids here, then they're gonna have that pushback again. So that was what it was, but you know.
No, no, you've got a point there.
That's, that's why they did it, but.
But they designed the lock and then they they produced the key and said, look at this key, it unlocks this lock, well, because you designed the lock.
I love that analogy.
That's great.
I've been trying to think of it now.
That's how it happened.
You brought it.
And I don't hate it.
I don't hate it, thank you.
I love it. Can I use that?
Please, it's all yours, it's in the public domain now. This is live.
So again, a, a, again, if there's a purpose other than this particular applicant. It beats me, I don't, I don't get it. I don't understand why, number three, ownership has to be a single parcel land, why can't people across the street come and? Bring, and maybe they have contracts, they're pending contracts, and the approvals, the contracts are subject to the approvals.
That's the way.
They can't bring an application.
That is how applications are done, exactly. That's how developers do it.
So this, that's absurd in my opinion.
Right, another why, right.
Affordable housing, that seems to be okay.
The only problem I have with the affordable housing piece, I I'm fine with this language, this is, but then they presented that they're gonna go above and beyond, but then they don't codify that, and so that's just a decision to be made. If they wanna do it in line with our town code as it stands, that's fine and present something greater, but I just. It was the one place where they didn't restrict themselves to. I I just, um, it's the one place where they didn't restrict themselves to the thing that they're presenting, that they're proposing, but okay.
And then the traffic management, I think again, it's 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 that and and parking comes up later on, but it's all part parcel. But the traffic management, it's not just what this will do, but it's gotta project with development and the balance of this district, what happens. So again, traffic study has to be given uh with some sort of build out projection. Uh it it seems to me for the entire district. Bicycle parking seems to be.
I don't care.
Right, I I just don't, I I don't think it's that big a deal. It'll have so much of a cost.
On from that.
Yep. I don't know why it would impose on, by the way, people across the street, you know, um. Maybe they're gonna be a little tight on space. Uh it's a nice thing to say, I think we all agree, but I I again, you're imposing these things. And they have to be policed, they gotta be checked, they gotta be paid for, and to what end? Um if people want it, they're gonna have it. They maybe have bicycle store at the basement. I I don't know. It's crazy to me.
I think this next one is interesting, the requirement for ground floor commercial.
Yep.
And um. That, I don't know, I I wonder if that maybe puts them in in a bind. I mean, I, or is is that? Is that a proposal because the town has said that they would like that?
I think so.
Because I'm not, I would be surprised if they actually, you know.
Well, he said he wanted, which was stunning to me. Well, absolutely stunning to me that he said yes.
But of course he said yes because the town wants it.
Right, I think he said he wants it because they've they've.
The towns ask for it.
They've studied what the town wants and they believe that they are responding to the needs and.
But he also went beyond that. He actually said, I, we think it's really important to develop, really think that to get action down here at this end of the street, et cetera.
Say that.
I don't. I think some people who actually live above would probably don't need a bunch of people on the ground floor. I don't think it's good for the units above. Anyway, we're projecting here.
But again, it's 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 another, it's something that would be imposed on the other property owner up north. And if you keep it in here, it would be imposed on all property owners in the overlay.
Well, so so but so this is a is is a planning and a town board question, right? Do we want?
It's a policy issue.
A requirement of retail or commercial use on the ground floor north Greeley, because it cannot be just on fifty north Greeley, that that requirement. Because then you're almost dooming it to fail ultimately, because you have this weird island of retail that doesn't stretch to the corner. We talked about like. You know, in previous iterations of conversations, how like the wrapping around the corner extending from 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 the corner ma- does make sense. And now if we're leapfrogging, the core, you know, the 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 property just past the corner and then saying only retail here. It it is just from a planning perspective, it doesn't make any sense. And so that that is a policy question that 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 needs to be addressed.
And and would be addressed in an overlay recently.
A hundred percent, right, completely.
In a proper way.
Yes, completely.
And then that would take care of the conversation of how do people get there? What's the parking? Are you gonna reduce the parking?
Yep, traffic.
And maybe the answer is yes or or no.
Right. So uh I I don't care about the housing, um you know, the unit sizes, but.
I don't know that it belongs here.
That it belongs here.
Yeah, it's not really just really building department or so things and, yeah.
Again, I again, this is, I think, just meets what they're.
Of course.
Or it it is that they they're, you don't wanna design big units, so they're.
Yeah, well, yeah.
They've got families with children.
So um on utilities and services, Bob, Seeley. Can you um help us, or help me anyway, with some of those water and sewer services? There not water and sewer service uh on North Greeley now?
Yes, there is. I mean, the town spent quite a bit of money improving the water during the Chappaqua improvement project. And I know Mike Youngens did a pretty good, very good uh study to determine what the existing sewer services were and the capabilities of it. And I think it turned out that they could accept a lot of the fill build out, I believe, in the form based code. So I think the water and sewer services are pretty good right now from where I stand. The only thing is I'll have to prevent, present a lot more backup. Uh if we're talking about fifty north really, they presented something to us, but it was a nice report, but there was no backup material. But I I wouldn't be too concerned with the water and sewer.
What about stormwater?
Well, that's my big concern because, you know, we've had many reports done by WSP when we were doing the Chappaqua downtown improvement project. And that system there is pretty much maxed out right now, and it can only handle pretty much maybe like a one and a half year storm. So that that would be my biggest concerns on any of these projects coming in is the stormwater management system, but they do put in there. Uh if you look at B, it does have to follow all the regulations of chapter one of the day, so. Uh I'm confident that that would be looked at and vetted quite thoroughly when they do come in for the project. But the, again, to answer your question, the amount of capacity in the system downtown is quite de minimis, to say the least.
Well, that's interesting, Bob, because later on we look and they say that the maximum permitted pervious coverage would be eighty-five percent. So if the other lots across the street went to, tried to go to eighty-five percent, what would happen then on the stormwater capacity that you have? Now that you say is is pretty much tapped out?
Well, I think I looked at that report, and when they state in their presentation. That it's going down from like eighty-eight to, I don't know what it was, they they have a decrease in 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 pervas, which is. Really only applies to the one year storm, just when using a green roof, which they do plan to use, which is a good thing. D E C likes it. It's part of the D E C regulations. That only is good for the one year storm. Everything that's in excess of a two year storm, anything above like two point seven inches. Is gonna be piped out into the town system. So really, that's a misleading statement in their presentation, because they would still need some sort of subsurface stormwater system. To detain and or retain all the water for their system, so. That's something that would have to be looked at and vetted when they present their SWIP for for the review by the town, which would be predominantly me.
Exactly. So wouldn't these two items be part of a normal site plan review process? And do they really, does it really belong in the zoning text? To me, that doesn't seem like it belongs here. Everybody has to go through this process.
I mean, I kind of put that in there with B. I mean, drainage storm, what everything has to go through chapter one oh eight A. So I guess they just put it in it to be double redundant. Just to make sure and it's not missed. So I think it's a good idea to put it in there for B.
Okay.
I'm confused. You're saying that if the storm is too much, then the the building that's being proposed is gonna shed too much water? But if if the building that is there is the same size of the existing building and the same paved area. Why would it be different?
Well, that's where, you know, getting into technical details of that system, that water system, I'm I's, I'm not convinced that no one did a study. This would be something they'd have to do. How much of that water from what's there now is actually getting into the system? I don't know how much from that stormwater leading from the asphalt. I don't know how much from the roof is getting into the system. That has to be demonstrated. I mentioned that to their engineer, so I, believe it or not, I can't find the building permit for that file. So they'd have to do pretty much die tests to see how much of that water from that site. I don't know what it is, one point three three acre, something like that, don't quote me on it, is actually getting into that system at all. So that remains to be seen.
But Bob, to Tom's point, uh wouldn't you have to go through the same sort of requirements on an R two A residential developer? Who would have to meet our stormwater requirements and prove it out and prove that he's got capacity and prove that he's gonna keep this water on his on his property?
We do this for every application.
Yes, well, the only difference with all the sites that's gonna be developed downtown is we know from geotech subsurface exploration. They did many, many, many years ago. The groundwater table is high, there's a lot of rock. Uh the soils down there are pretty much composed to peat. That's why majority of the buildings in downtown are all on pile caps. Everything, it has to be done in a storage tank, so they'll have to maintain it in subsurface storage tanks. Similar to what they did down on Schuman Road, uh and just release it where it does not affect the overall hydrograph of the system. That won't overtax the piping during a storm event. So, yes, to answer your question, it'll have to be looked at thoroughly and vetted, the same thing we do. Uh with anything that comes before the planning board, except when we do the planning board, we have a lot of, we have the luxury of having a lot of soils. That are good soils and have good infiltration rates. I would suspect here, based again on the geotech subsurface information that was given to us many years ago. When we started the Chappaqua project, uh the soils are not prone for any type of infiltration in any way, shape or form.
Those are all, uh uh I appreciate all of that, and um those are technical issues that would be addressed normally through a site. Um application process.
That's correct.
And are gonna be taken care of, and they either have to fix it or solve it or not, and if they don't solve it, then their application gets rejected. So I'm just asking whether it really belongs in a zoning text. I don't remember seeing this kind of technical sort of requirements in the zoning text before.
That's a good question. I defer to Jen on that.
So we can ask the, we can ask the town board, make a comment, ask them whether they think it's appropriate.
Yep, you can. It's it's really a matter of preference. Um if by including it, it's a special permit standard. That the town board has to confirm is met before they can issue the special permit. Um but it is somewhat redundant because they would have to comply with chapter one oh eight A anyway.
Right. Um green infrastructure, I don't have a problem with any of this, except I I guess I. I mean, I think that's probably good stuff to have in there. I don't know how the people feel. See.
Yeah, um my understanding is our our code is really uh designed to do this currently. To a very large extent.
Yes, I mean, the D E C manual has a whole section under chapter five. Like twelve or thirteen, fourteen types of green infrastructure improvements, which have always been in use. Which if your site can handle and implement and technical feasibility to put them in, by all means, put them in. These are good things to have. D E C likes to have them. They're good things to have for water quality. And these, keep in mind, these are all for water quality. All the green infrastructure improvements are just only to handle the one year storm. They do not help the flooding only in the one year storm.
Um so what do we do with this one? Do we suggest that it? It's already taken care of?
Well.
Well, is it a requirement or did I hear, Bob Seeley, did I hear you say that it's encouraged in the D E C? But not required?
That's what they're saying.
Uh they do require some of it, but not all of it. They're big on the runoff reduction volume and to get the runoff reduction volume, which really applies to one year storm. They do encourage the green infrastructure.
And and they're doing the same thing, they're saying.
And there's nothing tangible or concrete here.
Such a standard may be infeasible.
Yeah.
It's fine. It's it's truthfully, it's not the problem, right?
Exactly.
It's not the problem, but it's very interesting, and I think from the standpoint of planning, knowing what we know about the water table and the rock in town. This is, you know, a a policy issue for the town board. Would this perhaps not be the opportunity to actually use stricter regulations? Because of the problems that we have that are preexisting. So to echo what we have now, to me, doesn't seem to be doing very much, but if the policy here is to say, you know what, we got a problem downtown. So you guys are gonna have to build this stuff to the two year storm, five year storm, whatever it might be. I don't know what it is technically. But I think some sort of recognition that we have a problem here and perhaps um if anything, not to regurgitate what we have in town. Maybe this is the opportunity to make sure that we are taking steps again, um not just this one site, but the whole area. I go back to Donald Icestock, used to be on our board, and he was an engineer. He was very big on this stuff. He used to drive them crazy when people built up their lot and then just caused floods on someone else's lot. And it seems to me that this could be an opportunity in this district where we impose something, uh we suggest that the town board considers or something like that.
And I'll add that the, you know, the the sort of the conceit of this proposal is that it is green and sustainable and forward thinking. And, okay, um.
It might be, yeah.
Right, oh, but that that that's, you know, that's sort of the the um what they're proposing, why this is special, why this is a a special permit. Um and so in conjunction with the request for an increase in density. Perhaps um it makes sense to drill down to your point, Bob, about. What are, what are the requirements? Are are they comparable to what's already required or should they go above and beyond? Uh perhaps in exchange for.
And again, not just this lot, but the district.
Well, well, since um understood, since however the town is writing this legislation. The town doesn't necessarily have to give away an extra story in order to.
I'm not suggesting that 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 it is a a direct quick break, whoa, but but we're, this section is worth examining. Um in the context of what's being proposed on this lot and on the entire.
To me, that would be a tangible environmental benefit to the town, as opposed to the fluff that I was saying on the first page.
I agree.
Potential. It may be, maybe to owners, I don't know. I don't know the technical.
It's worth asking the question.
I think it's worth asking the question.
Absolutely. I mean, that, now that, now we're getting back to purpose and intent.
Yes, right.
Yeah, but you know, there's a place in there that 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 says, hey, we may do this and we may find that the environmental things don't work.
No, it actually says that the town engineer gets to decide that, right?
Well, when they, when they, when they do the study, uh there is a lot of provisions that if they can't need it because of technical infeasibility. I guess the engineer would write in his narrative and report and demonstrate it, and I guess they put me in here, and that's fine. I mean, that's my job. And I I'd have to agree with what they're doing, and the applicant might say, you know, because of technical infeasibilities, for whatever reason. Uh we can't do these certain type of green infrastructure, which could be the case.
Right. So refuse and storage collection.
Nothing special here, right? This is what we just, this we do all the time.
Undergrounding utilities.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah. I think that's minor.
That downtown, I mean, this is one site, one building essentially. I mean, what are we talking about? I guess we don't.
We don't.
They have to, there's no underground, so they have to string wires to the.
Not only do we not do it, but when the town had the opportunity to do it downtown, they didn't do it.
Yes, because of.
Because of the expense.
The expense and the time.
Yeah, so it's.
I remember that.
It's a very significant imposition, it seems to me.
So how are they gonna under, so they're gonna, they would then run their utilities from the poles straight down into an underground vault? And then across under and feed the building that way, which would be, I think that's a good thing.
That's good, yeah. Yep, no problem with it.
We can discuss parking, which is.
Yeah. And then the coverage issue nine, Bob, is would would go part parcel with the one year storm, the stormwater thing, whatever, whatever is appropriate. So off street parking is 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 obviously critical. And it was interesting because if you note, in the residential section, they they spell out one pay, one space for each dwelling unit. If you remembered, it was sort of like pulling teeth out of a chicken when we asked them, well, what was, what's the ask on the red, on the retail? Because it was so substantial. I think, as I recall, he said that your, our standard would be for that small amount of space. It would be sixty or seventy spaces, which is.
It's crazy.
Crazy. Um maybe it's not crazy, but the the. The request, the ask is is very substantial. Yeah, so this is where we can say the parking study should be done.
Yeah, exactly. Our point is, uh this should be.
Right.
Uh you know, uh from from my perspective, the question on the parking. Uh either has to address all of North Greeley and possibly beyond, but all of North Greeley, or. The approval of such a project cannot rely on the assumption that there will be. Other parking elsewhere offsite. Uh we would have to just be comfortable with whatever parking is provided onsite and decided that's, that we're okay with it.
Reduce the scope of what they're doing.
Because. No, no, I I'm saying, even if there, it it either has to take into account a larger area. Or no, you know, no, it can't rely on. Meeting uh its requirements offsite without considering the larger area, without having the study, because and 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 that's a, that's a choice, right? If the town board wanted to say the parking reduction is sufficient onsite and so be it. Um we're willing to take that risk for our town, fine, because that doesn't impact the neighbors across the street. Or street parking or any other site in in our downtown. Right now, it it it's sort of doing the worst of both worlds. In that it is, I we, it seems like they're 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 reducing parking, but not sufficiently enough. That that they can accommodate everything onsite, um but they're saying, well, there is extra parking because we're going first, we're gonna take it.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not, like we said, that's not town planning.
Right.
Um and so the comment on the off street parking is, we think there should be a larger question here. Um a parking study, it should take into account more.
Right.
Um.
I think if if.
Not just, I'm I'm sorry, not just the availability spaces, but parking ratios, getting back to the question of parking ratios, which is current, the current.
Well, because the availability of of spaces is the available spaces today.
No, I understand that.
I I know you do. I'm just saying, uh it it preclude and and will preclude, and if that's the. The standard that we're gonna move forward with on this site as proposed. It it will likely preclude additional development on North Greeley, because in those spaces, you can't count that. it, it will likely preclude additional development on North Greeley because in those spaces, you can't count them going forward.
Exactly, they're gone.
Right. Um, and so unless the parking study comes back and says, we are so oversupplied that this is a drop in the bucket will have no impact for the next fifty years, then, you know, I welcome a study like that, but, but, but realistically, that's not what it's gonna say. And it'll be nice to know what, what a, 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 a parking study actually says. And so, yes, I think, I think we are.
I think that's a good point though. If, if, if offsite parking is going to be an integral part of the application, that a full parking study of the district needs to be conducted.
Right.
I think that's our statement.
Yes, yes.
And then we'll, we'll be able to, and once that gets engaged, one can talk about what are the terms and conditions and scope of that.
Yep, completely.
Yep.
Completely.
Future demand rather than for the whole neighborhood. Right.
Right, but it also ha, i- i- it, it will also depend on if the zoning will, uh, if there's an overlay district, if the zoning does incorp, incorporate additional sites, actually, the all of North Greeley, uh, and allow for more development there, then there, there's gonna be a higher demand in the future.
Right.
Um, but okay, it, it, it's somewhat interrelated.
Yes, it is. I, I, I think the, the C is, is, I, I think that's, that's like, it's like Dennis with the tree wall. That's the corollary on page four, C, payment in lieu of parking. If you don't have enough parking, you just pay the town something. It's like, what? So we're just gonna pay for bad park, uh, parking block policy. Makes no sense.
It's like, and that's, let's get off the hook, right?
If we can't meet, we're just paying a fee.
Right, to what end?
Exactly.
What do we do with the money?
More trees.
Right. I mean, at least, right, at least you can plant more trees. I can have a small parking spot that's grow, to grow to a full size parking spot in, you know, in twenty years.
It's just crazy. I, I just, okay.
It's just nuts.
Yep, that's, that's all right. I don't know why, you know, the electrical charging vehicles, that, that's fine, I guess, but I don't know why it's in zoning. And why would be imposed on? Yeah, everyone.
Well, again, uh, if they want to provide E V parking, E V charging stations, fantastic.
Yes, do a hundred percent, whatever you want.
Yeah. Exactly. And if this applies to two sites, again, why are we burdening the site to the north if they don't wanna provide?
Exactly.
E V charging.
Right.
That's a, that's a town board policy.
Yep.
If they want to im- impose that globally, then great, uh, but it doesn't make, it, again.
On the green building stuff, um, has, um, Tom DePaul review, re- reviewed this? I mean, to what extent is some of this already dealt with in the stretch code? I, I, I just wonder if, uh, he's taken a look at this.
He, he has, it, it goes above and beyond the stretch code.
Okay, thank you. So this is another one of those environmental things. It's not a bad thing to have.
Not a bad thing to have.
Limiting others.
But if it's, exactly, if it's, uh, you know, it, it's terrific. This is, you know, this is great. If this is, if this is part of the deal that they're proposing to the town, to offset some other impacts, for example, stormwater or whatever, well, we're gonna do this instead. You know, they can weigh that. It seems to me, uh, that it, to, to do something above and beyond our, our current code could be onerous on smaller folks. Could be onerous on the next lot. I, I, who knows what they have in mind, uh, the, the next big lot up there.
This only applies to their lot, though, and the next one.
Right, it only applies to lots thirty-three thousand square feet and bigger.
Yeah, not the smaller ones.
But again, it, it, but it, but it also depends.
Again, I, I have problems with thirty-two thousand, so I wouldn't have it in.
Well, exactly. Right, it all depends on, does this, are these regulations gonna apply beyond these two sites?
Well, we're reviewing this proposal, right? So it's only these two sites.
Well, the issue is, why would it, if it's so good, why would you only impose it on these, on these parcels and not the entire district?
Right, well, it doesn't, right, but it doesn't mean that the town board might not do that subsequently. It doesn't, doing it here doesn't obviate, doesn't make.
Right, it would require another, another overland.
Well, that's my point, but, but.
You have all these little zones.
But the question is, so, sorry, the, the que, the question is, it seems like the, the concept here is that we would like some relief on a couple zoning, uh, requirements in exchange for, um, a, 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 a sustainable, uh, and, and forward-thinking design that will have benefits to the town and our world beyond what a standard building would be. Fine, if that's what's being said here, then, then
Say that.
Then, then say that, and, and maybe that's something that we, that the town wants to, to, to implement more broadly, but, um, it's just, we just need to figure out, like, what is actually being asked? Why is it being asked? What is the content, the context? What is the purpose? Um, is the point here to get more sustainable development?
No. No. Well, who's, who's point? The towns or the applicants?
I, I don't know.
No, the applicant's point is, the applicant's point is to maximize the investment.
No, so I know, I, I.
That's the essential key thing, and I think everything else is a trade-off to the town.
And everyone, the question that you asked was really from the perspective of the developer. Every one of those questions that you just rattled off was, you know, why do we want this? It, it has nothing to do with the town. This is, the town is, is posing a zoning, uh, change.
Right, but, but maybe the town wants to, um, you know, have, you know, sort of a, a, a quid pro quo for more sustainable development.
That's up to them.
Right. But, but it is, but, but that's the question.
I would say that, that the town would like to clean up the eyesore that that area is. And that's, that's the, the underlying, uh, thing that I think is happening. The other stuff, the candy on the side, that's nice, but you gotta make sure it works and you gotta maintain it. It costs money. But anyway, I think it's an eyesore.
So.
And it can be fixed.
I think you're right. Um, and it's been an eyesore for quite a while. Um, but maybe, El Dad, you're, maybe we're getting to the point of asking the planning board, do we think that those trade-offs are appropriate?
We should, I mean, at some point we have.
As a review of this document. I mean, that's a bigger question than, should we take that question off?
I, I, I think it's really a policy one for the town, but I think we have to frame the question so that they consider it.
Okay.
And, and I think then we can all talk.
As El Dad just did.
Yes.
And I think it will come before us, or we're going to have, that, that question will be intertwined with some of the additional questions that will come before us.
That is the question.
Um, in, in some of these joint sessions that we're anticipating, maybe some of the public hearings, um.
There is one other aspect to this, and I, we've overlooked it. Uh, I don't think it frankly is that critical. But remember, there was some interest in both the developers as well as the town, from what I understand, that this will be, um, an example, a showpiece. So to the extent that you do certain things just for this parcel, maybe it helps that, um, uh, that initiative to be a showpiece for the rest of the country. So, you know, we, we might wanna just keep that in the back of our mind because that was something that the developer raised, I think, um, I, I, I think they really ultimately want to maximize their profit, et cetera. But, and that's, that's fair, but I think there was some genuine interest in perhaps having this to be a showcase. Not, you know, not only for environmental stuff, but, uh, to really launch Newcastle.
Do you think, you, actually, do you think the town board feels that way? Have you heard them say that?
I wouldn't be surprised if some people do think that.
But you haven't heard it. Well, I don't wanna ask you what you've heard and haven't heard, that's up to you, but it just, uh, I think that, I think that's ridiculous myself. Personally, I just think that Newcastle does not need to be showcased in any shape or form. It's doing just fine.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine. I understand.
I mean, look at Tree City USA, we're doing fine, you know?
But again, the question is, what does the town board want? What is the purpose here?
Exactly.
Are we trying to develop this one site? Are we trying to, uh, encourage development? Are we trying to encourage green development? Are we trying to encourage density? Are we trying to limit parking? What, what do we, what do we want? What does the town board want? What does the town want? And how does this application fit into that? Okay, let, let, let's, let's continue.
I, I agree with all that. Open space. So this is one, this is where it gets really specific. And a, a lot of the, the rest of it is so specific that it's essentially locking in a site plan.
Yep.
And I think that all of, I don't know all of it, but I think that, that, that we ought to be, um, let the town board know that we think that, and I understand that it's the applicant's desire to advance the site plan at the same time as zoning. Well, if he wants to advance the site plan at the same time as zoning, then anything that gets approved in the site planning, I don't know which actually is gonna take precedence in that process. Right? If, if in the site plan review, there are things that the town board doesn't like, does that modify the zoning? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure how that all works. But it complicates things to have all of that specificity in zoning. Deal with it in the site plan process.
I, 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 I agree. Um, I'll also add that open space in and of itself is a fine thing to have in, in, in zoning code. Um, this here as written actually says nothing. There, there, there's, there's no requirements here.
No standard.
There's, there's no standard, there's no minimum, there's no maximum, there's no percentage, there's no ratio.
There's nothing.
There's nothing, right?
Exactly.
Uh, and so open space in and of itself is a fine thing to have in a zoning code. This says nothing, and I think Tom is right that all it does is it, it speaks to the, the, the site plan that they already have in mind.
Right.
Um, which is not appropriate in zoning.
Not, not a notch, not a notch on the key.
Is there a requirement that we want to impose for open space on development here? Maybe this isn't that. This doesn't say anything.
Um, and that would be true, I think, for all the open space.
Maybe, oh, yeah, completely. Now, section thirteen is, it says nothing.
And I wonder if that's true also for fourteen, design.
He, he, yeah, one last thought, then I have to go, but the, um, when we were starting to do this earlier, years ago, several years ago, one of the things that the town had said, and I think we said, was that what can we do to make Chappaqua a destination? And I don't see, I don't think that this really, this project will enhance that. But that's, to me, you know, the, the two backgrounds, you know, the small piece of property, the thirty-three thousand uh, square feet or whatever it is, that's to get rid of an eyesore. And, um, and if, if it's, it's a really good project, then good. And then where still do we get the ability to be a destination? I have to go.
Okay.
And I see there's some people that wanna talk with you guys.
Oh, really?
Yes, I just mentioned one thing, um, before we move on. And, and I think this relates to the design section that we're about to get to, uh, section fourteen. Um, keep in mind that these are special permit standards, not just zoning requirements. So these are things that the town board, when it reviews a special use permit application, will have to come, you know, confirm that in its judgment and its discretion, the application meets each one of these things. So when we're talking about, for example, like fourteen A, the scale, massing and character of a proposed project, so not negatively alter the character of the area. So from zoning perspective, right, if this was just a building permit application that was being reviewed for a zoning analysis, that's a very hard thing to implement, right? But here, it's a special permit standard where the town board has wide discretion to determine in its judgment whether the proposed project for the special use permit meets that design criteria.
That's fair.
That's good. That's good. Thank you. That would be true for B also, I think, unless I'm mistaken.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, exactly.
And, um, I, I guess C, you know, I guess that'd be fine.
I wasn't sure there, where it says side and rear yards, are we talking about the entire side yard? Or just a portion of the side yard and the rear yard?
Fine terms.
Yeah, maybe that's.
Right, I mean, otherwise then it defaults to the general definition of a side yard, which is the, the entire regulated side yard, so you probably wanna add some specificity there for, you know, ten feet, fifteen feet, whatever the appropriate size is.
Yeah, and then of course, D is the high ask and, and that's fine, I mean, in that it.
Well, I guess that has to stay in here. That's what they're.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, that's, at least it's, it's.
That's the ask.
It, that's the ask. It's specific and, and it's, it's fine. It just needs to be determined if that's, if, if, if there's support for it or not, but that, it's, at least it's specific and.
Yep.
Uh, I don't know why E is in here. It seems like it's redundant, uh, to everything else he said before.
Yeah.
Um, F, uh, all that. Okay, the facade stuff, that's site planning. It seems to me that that doesn't belong in here. I understand specificity, but I think that there are such significant issues that are embedded in this particular provision that really, um, go to the complete design of this thing and, and this thing, excuse me, that would be pejorative that way. This proposal that really need to be investigated. And to put these best, the specificity in here, um, seems to me that makes it more difficult to have that conversation and more difficult to, to, um, uh, get in a, in a, um, cooperative relationship with the, uh, developer to come up with something that is what we think is good for the town. I probably said that in too many words, but I actually think it ought to come out.
Let's police down.
Visual mitig, uh, what do people think about that?
Uh, there's no standards.
Well, there are, Streetwalk, my lesson, seventy-five street linear footage.
What, what are you talking about? Visual mitigation, fifteen?
No, no, oh, I was talking about the previous one. I think that that.
Which one? I'm sorry?
I'm talking about, um, C, oh, I'm sorry, F, I think F.
F.
Ought to come out. Okay.
Oh, F.
On page six.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yep. And then fifteen, I, I, again, there's just no standards. It says nothing.
Yeah.
We're gonna do a study, okay. What happens now? Again, uh, are, are we going to have like lighting? No spillover? Uh, is that gonna frustrate people? Is that, um, what's reasonable? I, I, I don't know. But there's, there's nothing here to tell us anything about what this means.
I agree. So sixteen, there's.
But I think, uh, I think visual mitigation is also a site plan issue. It's something specific to the site. It has to be looked at, so again, I guess it's a requirement that they have to look at it for the special use permit. I, I, I guess that's fair then. But again, if they're going to put it in, have standards.
Yeah, I think something to, like, the town board may require modifications to the project to reduce or eliminate impacts based on the results of the study or some, something like that to indicate, okay, now that you've received the study, what are you gonna do with it? What, what does the town board authorize to do?
I would go further and say, they, you know, consistent with our other laws, and that is, your first duty is to avoid. And then if you can't avoid it, then, you know, figure out how you're gonna mitigate it. So, um, yeah, but there's gotta be some sort of standard here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to, yeah, I agree.
I, how to make up the standards for them.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's tough.
It's a moving target, but, uh, but there has to be something other than the fact that they did a, uh, a visual mitigation study, okay? Now what?
Um, good point. So in sixteen, they are offering to give public land provided town, uh, in his mitigation, I guess, for, see, certain parts of his, to incentivize a developer to provide off-site improvements and amenities. Acquire public, acquire land for a public purpose, provided that the town board agrees to accept, accept such dedication. My question is, what's on offer? I mean, I don't understand this.
I think what there's, what the provision is saying is that if the applicant provides some public benefit, um, whether that's, uh, some sort of offsite improvement and amenity, public land, um, dedicated to, to the town, either through easement or fee, um, or some other special design feature, then the applicant can ask the town board to waive quote-unquote site requirements. I don't know what's meant by site requirements. If that's meant to be standards of, you know, uh, the special permit standards. Uh, that, that was one of my questions. I don't understand what site requirements are, but that's, that's basically what the provision is saying. If the applicant offers certain public benefits, they can ask the town board to waive site requirements, whatever those may be.
Well, all kinds of things, design features.
Right, but gi- given that everything else in here is written with this very specific intent, it's as if they have something in mind, and we'd love to know what it is, right? I mean, what, what is?
What's coming.
Yeah, like, I mean, is there something behind this? It feels like there is, and it would be nice to know what.
I think what might be.
Exact same thought.
I think what might be behind it, I'm, I'm just guessing here, but what could be behind it is that they're looking for the day when they end up in a site uh, plan, uh, discussion. And where, um, the town is asking for something that they really, really don't want to do and they have the opportunity under the zoning to say, how about if we do this for you instead? Now, I, I.
Right, like make a nice playground somewhere else or.
Exactly.
You know, fix up, uh.
Yep.
But do they need to have that, uh, would they need to have that provision in this zoning in order for the town board to be allowed to do that? Jennifer?
In order for the town board to.
Waive some of these requirements.
Waive some of the requirements which are.
Yes, it would need to be specifically legislated in order to, otherwise, the town board has to confirm that each of these special. in order to, otherwise, the town board has to confirm that each of these special permit standards are met. Alternatively, the applicant would go for a variance from the zoning board, uh, variance from, from one or more of the special permit standards.
Oh, so it'd be on the level of like variance, that they may be asking.
Right, if the waiver provision is not specifically enumerated in the code, then the o- only other alternative that the applicant would have is a variance.
So in this, by this provision, that's one way for them to bypass the zoning board?
Provided that they, they provide whatever public benefit the town board would consider acceptable.
It's, by this device, they could bypass the zoning board to get.
They could, yes, yes.
You know, it's a little bit of an elastic clause, right, that just says, as long as the town board certifies that we did something that they wanted, we can, you know, and, and they agree to it, we can then not be held to any rule in this entire.
Well, some rule, the town board's gonna have to approve it.
They'd have to approve it.
It's a buyout.
So here, here's the problem, here's the problem I have with that, which is, we have a zoning board, independent zoning board for this specific purpose, and that's why they're there.
And you're bypassing them.
And they're bypassing that. And it's up to the town, obviously, they're gonna decide what this is, but it seems to me that the town board would, should, allow the zoning board to do what they're constituted to do under state law, and it's, it's like we should be allowed to do what we're constituted to do. It's, it's just sort of, in that regard, there's no difference between the planning board and the zoning board.
Or any other boards, ERV, ARV, all, yeah.
ERV isn't, isn't state.
No, that's correct, correct.
Anyway. Um, so I, I, it seems to me that this ought to come out.
Well, I, we, we should point toward what we think is the issue, and that we don't, we don't support the notion that the ZBA would be.
However you phrase it.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that's, I think we should push the smoke aside and say, this is what this is essentially can do.
Right, also with the question, do they have something specific in mind?
Yeah.
Um, you know, they wrote the site requirements, and then they give themselves an opportunity to avoid some of the site requirements in exchange for something.
What is that?
I, I, I just think they're worried, they just, they just want something in their hip pocket to be able to.
An escape clause.
Escape clause, for what may come, that's what I think.
Yeah.
But we can ask them, you know? Application procedure, wow. Well, the only one, I, I, you know, I went through this and I just got dizzy, but I woke up again when I got to the last, well, the number, uh, number five.
Well, before that, the only one I had, uh, yeah, there is wordsmithing, but it's, uh, in the first paragraph on page seven, they talk in terms of anticipated traffic generation, parking demand, uh, and say, and impacts of the proposed project. But more importantly, um, I talked about this before, I would include as one of the requirements, uh, geotech study. Again, we know that downtown Chappaqua has got all kinds of constraints in terms of its rock, its Pete, we heard from Bob before, drainage, flooding. Um, so geotech is, is, I think, critically important to understand what, what is the language to do, or making sure that we have the information.
Well, I, I, I would wanna know, what is the purpose of, of the language in the application procedure section? If it is to streamline the process for them and them only, um, again, it is a larger policy question, what, what, what is the appropriate process for, uh, rezoning, site plan, the development of, of parcel in our downtown, if we wanna change the process, that's okay. But it, I don't think there should be a special process for one site.
What's so special about this side of North Greeley? To generate this kind of zoning change, I mean, basically, if you wanna really be, reduce it to its basics, that's it. What's so special about these two parcels that we are generating all this legislation that could impact others, without having full understanding what those impacts are?
Which gets to my question before about i- 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 is what's so special that the, 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 the sustainability measures, is that the point? If so, fine, if, if that's the, the purpose of this, to.
Then we can, then we can address that.
To encourage sustainability measures, and that's a question, i- i- is it, is it worthwhile, but, but, um, this, speaking specifically about the application procedure, I might even be in support of some of these procedures, but not for one, one site, or, or, excuse me, two sites, in the town, and two sites only, it just doesn't make sense.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, it's inequitable.
Yeah, that's right.
To people across the street, what, again, what's so special about the other side of the tracks here than these folks?
Exactly. That's right.
Really?
That's right, so, 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 uh, I, I'd like to understand that the purpose and intent of, of C here, application procedure, and, um, how it, why, why, you know, but, if the town board is willing to consider a zoning overlay that applies to all of North Greeley, then I'm absolutely more comfortable with considering the change in the process.
Oh, yeah.
Because of X, Y, and Z, right, it's, it's just more equitable, it's, it makes more sense, it's, it's more geographically.
Maybe, maybe not, oh, that, that's, I agree, no, yeah, right.
To be seen, to be, to be determined, but it's, at least it's a, a question.
Right, but if, 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 if the language applies only to this side or just to two sites, and we also don't even know if it just applies to two sites, because geographically, it applies to two sites, but the other requirements might make it impossible to develop that other north side.
And I don't think.
Because none of these requirements are written for that side.
Exactly, and I don't think.
You know, it's a long and narrow side.
Oh, yeah, it's not gonna.
You know, it's, it, it's not gonna be developed like this.
No.
It's, I, it, I don't know why, it, I don't know why it's in there, maybe in there to say that applies to one side. I don't know why, but the motive is not important here. Um, so I, 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 it just, if you look at this last, the very last sentence that I objected to last time, where it talks about the planning board has the right to, or the obligation in the process to, um, do site plan review, and can, um, you know, weigh in on all matters, site plan matters, except those which are specified in here. So much is specified in here, there's really, the site plan is determined by the language in here.
Mm-hmm.
And what's left for this, I asked, uh, the, uh, the, the attorney the other night, you know, what, so what is, what's, what's it left for us to do, and he said, well, you get to, you know, check signings, and you can look at the, you know, sidewalks, and, you know, street lamps and stuff like that, as though, you know, that was a significant contribution, um, in this project, and I, this has to be addressed. This is, to me, this is just not right, and it occurs to me that one of the reasons they have the town board involved in the site plan review, embedded in the review of this, is in order to get, to allow the town board to weigh in on site planning issues, right? And to, for the town board to be in a conversation with the planning board about those things. I happen to think that, um, it's, as, as excellent as our town board is, I happen to think that site plan issues are planning board and zoning board obligations, requirements, and we are constituted to do that. And there's another process that we went through on Chappaqua Crossing, which was putting in new zoning for the retail development. And then having, as part of that, we reviewed the zoning, as I recall. We also had a process called the concept, preliminary concept and development plan, whatever that was called, where the developer had an idea of how he was gonna develop the property, and provided drawings, and the planning board had the authority to work with them and say, there's a better way to do this. And we came up with not only a better way to do the, a much better way to do the, the retail, but also came up with a much better way to do the residential.
Right.
And that process worked very, I think, it worked very, very well, it's, the, the developer complained, was actually, actually, he worked very well with us, I thought. Um, I think he would prefer not to have to do it, but he did it because he needed to develop the property, and, and everything's gonna turn out great there. I don't understand, I guess, why something like that couldn't work here, why there couldn't be a division, uh, between the town board responsibilities with respect to legislation, and have it only about appropriate legislative zoning things, and all the design things are part of the, 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 uh, planning board's responsibility. And they trust us, the developer, they trust us to help them through that process and come to what would be potentially a better result.
I think from a developer's perspective, it's exactly comes down to the same thing you're talking about, is maximum return quickly, right? So if they're going through this process, it's gonna just be longer, which means then they're not getting out of it sooner. That's, that's really what it's driven by, but from our perspective, we shouldn't be doing.
No, our perspective is, uh, I think our standard should be better.
I agree.
What is, what is better, how do we come up with a better result?
So my, my posting that up as a, as not necessarily a model, but an example, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is to the town board.
Mm-hmm.
Look at this procedure, right, and think about other ways it can be done, that, um, have proven to work well in the past.
The, the other thing, Tom, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, but what I'm saying is that for smaller developers, I'm not talking about this developer in particular, if you have a smaller developer, it's a, if we're looking at, and this was one of the discussions we had when we were talking about the, uh, zone, you know, the, the downtown changes, basically, is, it, it's a big overhead in terms of time and effort that they have to put in, to be able to come up with, and for us to be building something there, so if there is a way for us to come up with standards, but I, I absolutely agree that it has to be even across the board, I mean, if you're gonna come up with rules, it needs to be even across the board, and should accommodate for best standards.
Well, the, so I, this is, I guess, I'm not suggesting that by the process, uh, to use the process we used in Chappaqua Crossing would apply to every developer in the district, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying in, in particular, this particular development.
Just the thirty-three thousand square foot ones.
If the town board. Yeah, that's big enough, nothing smaller. Uh, if, I guess I'm saying, if the town board decides that they want to do a special permit, you know, they wanna go through this, do it with special zoning for this site, the way they did in Chappaqua Crossing, that this, that the Chappaqua Crossing process could apply.
Yep.
And also, it begs the question, is, if you have these boards in place, they have a function, so if you're, if everyone's gonna sit on the same, you know, and opine at the same time, are we utilizing our, our, our resources the best way?
Yeah.
As a town, also.
Yeah, and I think, um, you know, it's, it's interesting to note, um, you know, the, uh, I think over the past two or three years, there's been such, um, incredible turnover on the town board. That it's very difficult, it seems to me, to have, uh, you know, consistency in terms of, you know, what is the policy? This week's policy was this, but what about next week's? So it's, uh, it's, you know, it's interesting that, uh, you know, members of, uh, ERV, zoning board, us, and, and the, I think, ARB, tend to be a little bit more consistent, um, thank goodness we don't have to run for election. Um, and, um, so, uh, just continuity. Um, you know, there was a good deal of continuity on Chappaqua Crossing on the town board and, and playing board, but again, uh, you know, I think, we're like turtles, we outlived, uh, all the other people in, in the process, so.
So, so we've gone through the, the text, the proposed text, I think we made, uh, a lot of good points, comments, what we don't like, why we think, uh, why we don't like it, not just we don't like it, but why, what would be better. Um, a lot of the points, I think, are dependent on each other, right?
It's related, yeah, absolutely.
If, if the town board is determining that they do wanna apply some of this more broadly, that, then, then, uh, then they, that impacts some of the other, uh, concerns that we had, and if they aren't, that impacts them in a different way. So it, it'll be important to understand what they're thinking, but I, I, I think we have, and I think relative, in relative agreement, um, taking this, uh, this document apart, uh, to an extent that I'm comfortable with.
I think we've, you know, we framed our concerns.
Yeah.
And we framed the issues that we feel the town board needs to, uh, come to some conclusions about.
Yeah.
In order to successfully move this forward, so I think that's what we're, that's our role, at this point.
I, I, I think a joint meeting with the town board, if that is, uh, desirable for them, is, is something that I, I welcome.
Absolutely.
Although, I, I'm, I'm now realizing or reminded that there is perhaps someone with their hand, a pub member of the public?
Yep, I, I, uh, we don't have to, but we certainly should, anyone who's got a hand up that long and still here, deserves to be recognized, Carrie, can you, um, is it Carrie?
It carries, yeah.
They're, they're here.
Okay, okay, if you could, uh, uh, recognize the person or, or. Okay.
Hello, good evening, my name is Margaret, my name's Margaret Ferguson, and, and I do thank you for letting me speak, I'll keep it brief, I know it's late. I, first of all, I wanna say, this has been a terrific discussion, I really have enjoyed it, and a lot of, um, interesting points have been made, and I appreciate all the effort you're putting into this really significant, uh, juncture for the downtown. So thank you for everybody, um, making such wonderful, uh, comments and having a great discussion. I just wanted to point at a couple things off the top of my head, um, based on some of the things I heard, it's not really in the best order. Um, I did hear at a, a town board meeting that three stories will work for this project. I am virtually certain I heard that, and it was said by either the owner of the property or the architect. They said three stories would work if you eliminated retail. So, I just, uh, that, um, and I can't remember what meeting it was, maybe it was a September meeting, it wasn't a recent meeting, but anyway, that was said. Um, then I also have looked at a so-called parking study by the applicant dated November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, it's online, and it has data take a single day in November to, to back up, in attempt to back up its claim, which is that there is a wealth of parking in the downtown, that the downtown is oversupplied, and it gets to that assertion, but relying on the use of public spaces within a five to ten minute walk to meet the project's parking, uh, requirement. Now, if that's where we're going, then that, as I've heard, said repeatedly, that has to be given, uh, by that, I mean, using public property for parking, that has to be considered very carefully. Obviously, the applicant is motivated by consideration that does not apply to what matters to residents, um, which is its profit motive, building parking's expensive, and if it can piggyback on our existing public spaces, it will save a lot of expense for the applicant. Um, in, uh, in twenty-twenty, a thousand, uh, parking space lot opened at Albany County Airport, and it costs forty million, that's forty thousand a space, it was substantially higher than the original estimate, by the way. And that is that Albany County cost, not Westchester County cost. And here we have, in Chappaqua, we have difficult soil, soil and a high water table, so both of those factors will materially add to construction cost. So any garage that we might end up building, which is where I fear we'll be headed if, if this, um, if we keep culling spaces from commuter lots, any garage is gonna be a, um, significant undertaking. And, um, you know, i- 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 if, if this building is gonna get a certain number of spaces, what happens with building two in the commuter lot? It gets more, and another one gets more, and, and so it goes, so I can see that us being so squeezed for parking at some point, merchants, residents, commuters, that out of desperation, a parking garage is considered, and, and that's, that'd be a real big expense and a real big change down here. Um, then, um, I don't know that this so-called parking study gives any consideration to the impact of parking needed in North Greeley for the chap line. I tried to find that information again, I can't remember how many spaces were identified as being needed for the chap line in the North Greeley area, but there were a number, um, and then, and, you know, even ten spaces can matter at this point. And then we have local laws, such as those that prevent current residents from parking on streets overnight in the winter, or parking in the commuter lot. We were told that plowing is such an added expense when people do that, that that's why current residents can't park in the streets, so what are we gonna do, have, you know, cars parked everywhere? What I'm getting at is, there's all these costs down the road, that, um, some of which we may be headed for, but it's, none of this is addressed in what I've seen so far from this applicant. And I also wanna speak up for the people who live down there, who don't, who have homes already in that area, who don't really want their quiet streets turned into overnight parking lots. Um, the last thing I wanna say is, on the same day they put in that parking study, they also filed a rather odd document that's called something like potential impacts of the proposal, it's kind of a secret type document, but really one that's rather casually done, and in that document, the applicant briefly notes, um, that traffic study that was done in connection with the form-based code, but the traffic study was declared null and void by this town board this summer for plenty of good reasons. And so, uh, this applicant cannot and should not be relying on that out, study in any sense. So those are my points, and thank you for listening to me, and thank you for tonight.
Okay, well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, um, so before we leave this, uh, Sabrina, Jennifer, uh, do we have, have we given you enough that we can start to put together a memo for our next meeting, or your beforehand? I guess we have to ask.
I think so.
I do, I've been taking copious notes as time be. Lee, as you've been speaking, so I think between Jen and I, we can put together a solid draft over the next week or so. Um, you you know, I I I know I'm pretty busy, I'm sure Jen is too, but I think within the next two weeks, we can get you a draft in time for your next meeting discussion.
Yeah, well, we. It's gonna be the January thirteenth, so I guess we have to talk.
We're gonna have to ask for an extension.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
There's no, you don't meet before the the deadline.
Exactly, exactly.
Who asks?
I'll ask, I mean, it's okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a hard ask.
Yeah. Okay, I I think that sounds good, I'm happy to help out with your with your draft as you're moving on it, so.
Well, we'll we'll get together, it will be a rough draft, I am sure. Um, because it's really something that you guys need to call through and finalize, but we'll get you something to work with.
Fantastic, terrific. Okay, our last item on. Is the minutes, so we have the minutes of our meeting from December sixth. I customarily have little minor things that I give to Felicia, I guess I'll just scan them in.
That would be great.
Tiny, but does anyone else have anything that's substantive or major issue question? On the minutes?
Yep, I gave a comment also, and uh, you know, it's a very, very tiny one, only four letters, actually, one of which is a problem, but it's. Uh, she has that, and she'll she'll fix that in.
Okay.
With a type of a typo.
Okay. Very good. All right, uh, with those minor changes, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of December sixth?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Hi.
Who seconded that?
I did, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
And um, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second? So many ties here.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Who's claiming this, it's hard for me to write this.
That was like a unanimous motion, a unanimous second.
Motion to Dick, the second to Canaan or Tom, which one?
She deserves it.
Very good, uh, all in favor?
Hi, hi.